Good morning and welcome to the October twenty fifth public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance and I'll ask our general counsel, Mark Silverman, to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chen. Is that here? Commissioner Chapin's here, Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devon's here.
Here.
Mr. Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Lutfi. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
All right. Good morning and welcome again to the October twenty fifth public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Commission. This meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to testify on any of the hearing items, you may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at the estimated time for that item that is shown on our web agenda, which can be found on our website. And if you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so by going to our YouTube channel. So this morning, we have a number of items. We are going to start with a an uh public hearing for a proposed designation. And then we will be moving to applications for work on designated properties. And we'll start with a public meeting for applications for work on designated properties that have already had a public hearing and are being and are here today with revised proposals. And then we will move to our public hearing for new applications for work on designated properties. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Research, Caitlin Musmikail, to take us through the first public hearing item.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. Item number one on the research agenda this morning is LP two six six two, The Lesbian Hurstery Archives at four eighty-four Fourteenth Street in Brooklyn, block eleven oh three, lot thirty-one. Item proposed for a public hearing is a Renaissance Revival row house designed by Axel Hedman and constructed in nineteen oh eight that has housed the Lesbian Hurstery Archives since nineteen ninety-one. And presenting this morning is Deputy Director of Research, Margaret Herman.
Good morning. All right, next slide, please.
Should I go forward? Let me need this one.
Good morning. Four eighty-four Fourteenth Street in Park Slope, Brooklyn is culturally significant as the home since nineteen ninety-one of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, the nation's oldest and largest collection of lesbian-related historical material. The organization's headquarters for over thirty years. This Renaissance Revival-style building is where the Archives expanded its collection, grew to national prominence, and continues to serve as a vital educational organization, community space, and center for lesbian history and culture. The building is on Fourteenth Street between Eighth Avenue and Prospect Park West within Brooklyn's Park Slope Historic District. The proposed landmark site consists of the tax lot, block eleven oh three, lot thirty-one. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives is an entirely volunteer-run nonprofit organization founded in nineteen seventy-four by activists Joan Nestle, Deborah Edel, and others, housed until nineteen ninety-one in Nestle and Edel's apartment on the Upper West Side of Manhattan. The Archives began as a grassroots attempt to end the silence around lesbian history and to create a physical archive for study, analysis, and community gathering. At a time when the LGBTQ community faced widespread legal and social discrimination, the Archives fought to bring lesbian cultural artifacts into public view and to normalize them as an integral piece of American history. The project was national in scope from its early years and was intentionally feminist in nature, using the term "herstory" to note the rejection of patriarchy. It was also inclusive, with women of color counted among the organization's early supporters and contributors. The image on the left shows early members participating in the Second Annual Gay Academic Union Conference at NYU in nineteen seventy-four. And the images on the right show volunteers sorting through periodicals and attending a gathering at the Archives' Upper West Side home. The collection had outgrown its space in the late nineteen eighties, and by nineteen ninety-one, the Archives had raised enough funds to purchase four eighty-four Fourteenth Street in Park Slope, Brooklyn, which had become a center of the lesbian community in New York City. After more than a year of renovations, the building was transformed into a new headquarters for the Archives. In nineteen ninety-six, the Archives paid off their mortgage, an achievement that held enormous significance for the organization. The Archives now had a permanent headquarters that could serve as a direct response to the pervasive homophobia, sexism, and lack of lesbian space the community had experienced throughout history. The Archives were conceived as a living repository and has grown to include a wide variety of materials dating from the nineteen fifties to the present with a national scope, collected and donated by lesbians themselves. Materials in the Archives include periodicals, files on lesbian activists and community groups, audiovisual materials, oral histories, and the personal and professional papers of lesbians from a diversity of cultural, ethnic, and class-based communities. Among many others, significant collections include those of the organization's Daughters of Belidus, the Salsa Soul Sisters, and the New York chapter of ACT UP, as well as the papers of Archives co-founder Joan Nestle, nineteen sixties organizer Barbara Giddings, and the African-American activists Mabel Hampton and Audrey Lord. Since nineteen ninety-one, the Archives has continued to expand their collection with new materials added pertaining to more recent lesbian individuals and activist groups and to issues like lesbian parenthood, political organizing in the nineteen nineties, and the marriage equality cases of the twenty-first century. Over the last two decades, the Archives has greatly increased public access by digitizing a significant portion of their collections, including photographs, audiovisual materials, and Archives newsletters. Shown here are images of a digitized newsletter from two thousand and one, and online exhibits of video and audio files from the Daughters of Belidus and ACT UP. Over the last thirty years, the Archives has also broadened their national reputation by holding numerous volunteer-led events and traveling exhibitions across the United States and at their home in Park Slope. The images here highlight a small sampling of these events, including a talk given in Illinois in nineteen ninety-three, a gallery exhibition of lesbian pulp paperback covers in Hawaii in nineteen ninety-nine, and a marathon reading of work by Audrey Lord and Adrian Ridge held at the Archives in twenty twelve. The Archives has also contributed extensively to important LGBTQ exhibitions at larger institutions such as the New York Public Library in nineteen ninety-four and the New York Historical Society in twenty nineteen. In recent years, the Archives has been noted by scholars for its unique position as a non-institutional, community-based archival collection funded solely by private and non-governmental sources, realizing goals set by its founders almost fifty years ago. The Archives' home at four eighty-four Fourteenth Street is located just west of Prospect Park within the Park Slope Historic District designated in nineteen seventy-three. The Historic District is a residential neighborhood consisting of intact late nineteenth and early twentieth-century streetscapes, featuring row houses of a mostly uniform height designed in a variety of styles. Four eighty-four Fourteenth Street was originally a two-family home designed by Axel Hedman for the Prospect Park West Realty Company in nineteen oh eight. It was designed in the Renaissance Revival style as part of a row of seven similar limestone-fronted row houses with alternating curved and angled bays. The building contributes to the character of the Historic District, but because the designation predated the Archives' arrival in nineteen ninety-one, there's no mention of the building's LGBTQ significance. Designating four eighty-four Fourteenth Street as an individual landmark would highlight this important history and emphasize preservation of the building to its period of association with the Lesbian Hurstery Archives. Since purchasing four eighty-four Fourteenth Street in nineteen ninety-one, the Archives has used their building in Park Slope for archival storage and display, offices, and community space with a caretaker's apartment on the top floor. The organization has diligently maintained the building, and it retains a high degree of integrity and historic character within the surrounding streetscape. In the early nineteen nineties, the Archives worked with LPC to implement limited alterations related to accessibility, security improvements, and window changes necessary for the building's new use as a nonprofit and repository of archival materials. As a nationally important collection of LGBTQ historical materials, the Lesbian Hurstery Archives plays an essential role in telling the story of a mostly unseen community of women who contributed to America's cultural, political, and social history. Four eighty-four Fourteenth Street has been the organization's home for over thirty years, where it has continued to collect important materials and serve researchers and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Kate or Margaret's point? All right, I'm not seeing any questions, so why don't we move to public testimony and see if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this item. So we'll ask, if there's anyone here, we'll ask you to raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. We'll, as always, start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get to everyone else. But whether or not you signed up, we ask you to raise your hand so we can actually find you in the list of attendees. So I will turn it over to Gregory Colla to take us through the testimony.
I'm gonna start today, actually.
Okay, thank you, Sonia. We'll turn it over to Sonia Gior.
Thank you. Um, so we do have a number of signups in advance. Our first speaker will be Saskia Schiffer. And Saskia, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you so much for that incredible testimony. I am, I am truly wowed listening to everything that that we have accomplished. Actually, I am one of the coordinators at the Lesbian Herstory Archives. I have been involved since nineteen eighty-nine. And I am, I am incredibly happy to be here to hear that there's a possibility for some official recognition of our status as a landmark. We are a landmark in more than just a building, by the way. We are a true community organization. The, everybody is welcome at the Archives, and not only to use it, but also to participate, to be part of the collecting and archiving process, to learn about their history and the context of their lives in, 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 in the world. And um that's really the essence of what I would like to say. And I think I'll give the, the mic over to the next person.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker will be Colette Montoya. And Colette, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Are you able to unmute your line? Okay, I think we'll go on to the next person for now, circle back. Our next speaker will be Amanda Davis. Amanda, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. If you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, we'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, uh, good morning, Chair Carroll, Commissioners, and LPC staff. My name is Amanda Davis, and as I believe you know, I'm the project manager of the NYC LGBT Historic Sites Project. I'll be reading a condensed version of the testimony I've already submitted. The project strongly supports the designation of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives as a New York City landmark, which would be the first LGBTQ historic site to be designated in Brooklyn. When we launched our website with an inaugural one hundred sites, the Lesbian Hurstery Archives was included. Its resources, particularly its archival photographs, as we just saw earlier, have been invaluable to our project in documenting many of the over four hundred-plus sites now on our website. And I thank Saskia Schiffer for working with us on that as well. With a history that spans nearly fifty years and thirty of those and more in Park Slope, the Lesbian Hurstery Archives is likely the first longstanding lesbian-specific community space in New York City. The Archives was born out of the need to provide a voice for lesbians who often felt underrepresented and unheard in gay male-dominated groups and to connect emerging artists and writers with more established ones at a time when lesbians were less visible in mainstream culture. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives' location in Park Slope also speaks to the importance of the neighborhood to LGBTQ history. By the nineteen nineties, Park Slope was popular with lesbians and their families as a place to live and find community, and several lesbian-associated groups and businesses, including the Archives, operated there. As a result, the designation of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives building as a New York City landmark would also highlight and celebrate Park Slope's historic significance to the lesbian community. The NYC LGBT Historic Sites Project proudly supports this proposed designation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to Colette Montoya. And Colette, if you can unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect.
Hi, my name is Colette Denali Montoya. I'm an Indigenous queer woman living in Manhattan. I'm originally from the Pueblo of Aslata in New Mexico. I began volunteering with the Lesbian Hurstery Archives in the summer of two thousand and eleven, and I became a member of the Coordinating Committee in two thousand and fourteen. I'm responsible for the audio collection, and I've been stewarding the digitization project of over three thousand audio cassettes for the past ten years. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives, I think, has been noted as the first and perhaps only building owned by a lesbian nonprofit organization. It's intricately linked to lesbian life in New York City as the archival home of anyone who identifies as a former or current lesbian or in any way with the word. Most lesbians don't inherit queer culture from our parents. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives is our birthright, and it's the place where we can go to learn our own history. But all are welcome to visit and research, not only lesbians. Finally, it's a site of rematriation for Leninapi lesbians. Leninapi peoples are the original people of this land, and they still reside and return to this place. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives is committed to ensuring the preservation of Indigenous lesbian and Two-Spirit materials and stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lucy Levine. And I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural landmarks, HTC enthusiastically supports the designation of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives as an individual cultural landmark. This nineteen oh eight three-story Renaissance Revival row house designed by Axel Hedman at four eighty-four Fourteenth Street received recognition on its architectural merits from the LPC in nineteen seventy-three, when it was included in the Park Slope Historic District. Today, it is right for the LPC to also recognize the building as the first LGBT historic site designated in Brooklyn for its pioneering legacy as the home since nineteen ninety-one of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives. Originally founded in nineteen seventy-four, activists and supporters, including such noted figures as Joan Nestle, Deborah Edel, Mabel Hampton, and Audrey Lord, the Lesbian Hurstery Archives is the nation's oldest and largest collection of lesbian-related historic material. For more than thirty years, four eighty-four Fourteenth Street has served as repository and launchpad for lesbian history and community. Today, the Archives continues to grow its collections, offering materials from the nineteen fifties to the present, which are national in scope and inclusive in nature. Cultural landmarks have long been an advocacy focus for HTC. In twenty eighteen, HTC celebrated cultural landmarks citywide as one of our six to celebrate priorities. In our guidebook, we included such noted LGBT sites as Audrey Lord's residence on Staten Island, Christine Jorgensen's childhood home in the Bronx, the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, and the USTA Billie Jean King National Tennis Center in Queens. This year, our twenty twenty-two presentation, Preservation Conference, partially focused on understanding and celebrating cultural landmarks. We hope that the Landmarks Commission will continue to identify and designate cultural landmarks across the five boroughs at an increasing rate, especially those sites that celebrate the history and culture of those communities less recognized by the LPC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Catherine Crater. And I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. I guess I was muted. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Catherine Crater. I am a resident of New York City, and I'm happy to testify in support of the proposed designation of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, LP two six six two. As a New York City resident and member of the LGBTQ community, I believe in preserving locations in which diversity and identity of New Yorkers is celebrated, studied, and preserved, in particular, recognizing spaces that are instrumental to lesbian history and that center the LGBTQ experience of women is critical. In my professional capacity as an architectural historian, special collections librarian, and archivist at Avery Architectural and Fine Arts Library at Columbia University, I can attest to the importance of preserving the architectural spaces in which such culturally significant activities take place. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We do not have any other speakers signed up. But we do have another hand raised, and that's Elizabeth. And I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi. Um, okay, let me turn on the video. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Daly. I'm a native New Yorker. Um, I am also a journalist, and I'm also part of the queer community. And I cannot say how valuable something like the Lesbian Hurstery Archives is. Um, the previous person who gave testimony said that we don't inherit our history from our parents, and I think that that's a really crucial thing to say about the importance of preserving lesbian history specifically. And I think as a journalist, this space has immense, immense import to people in my profession, people who are doing research, people who want to know what was it like to live in a time before the internet, for example. People who want to lay their hands on physical objects that belonged to people who were members of their community. Uh, I think that preserving this, the space is paramount to the city, especially as we are experiencing the closure of many, many LGBTQ spaces. And I think the city has a vested interest in maintaining this archive as a, a birthright for those of us who, you know, grew up in this city and contribute our memories to this site. So that's all I would like to say.
Thank you. All right, so we do not have any other speakers signed up. And I'll just check, there's no other hands raised. So I will note that we received, in addition to the testimony today, twenty-five letters, all of which were in support, two of which were from community organizations, the Leslie Lowman Museum of Art and the Alice Austin House. And I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So Commissioners, do we have any questions after hearing the testimony for Kate or Margaret? All right, I don't see any questions. You know, I do want to say I'm very excited about this proposed designation. And I want to thank the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, who, representatives who've been so wonderful as we've met with them, our team, Kate and Lisa Krzysztoficz, and the rest of our team who've met with them and talked about the history. They've shared information with us that have helped us to put together our proposal. And, and they've been great supporters, so I want to thank them for all that they've done. I also want to thank the LGBT History Historic Sites Project, who has also been a great partner with us as we have started to and have continued to work through our priorities and thinking about equity in our designations and equitable representation. And as you may recall, we recently had a LGBT initiative where we, following up on Stonewall Inn, we designated six other wonderful sites that represented agents of change. And, and this is sort of building on that as well. And we continue to work with the Historic Sites Project to identify priorities as we think about our team's priorities and their priorities and opportunities where there are overlaps. I want to thank them for their collaboration as well. And we will be continuing our research and incorporating all of the testimony that we've heard today. And we'll bring this back for a vote in the very near future. So until then, I'd like to ask us to close the hearing. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed, and we will bring this back for a vote in the very near future. So thank you, Kate, and thank you, Margaret, for your hard work on this. Okay, we'll now move to our Preservation Department agenda. And Corey Scott Harrell, our Director of Preservation, will take us through both the public meeting and public hearing agendas.
Okay, thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC twenty-two dash zero seven five eight six. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, block eighty forty-six, lot forty-five, two thirty-seven Hollywood Avenue in the Douglasston Historic District. This is a New England colonial revival-style freestanding house and a contemporary garage designed by Lyle Bullware and built in nineteen thirty-three. The application is to demolish the garage, remove a tree, modify an entrance, replace windows and a wall, and construct an addition driveway and curb cut. This was last presented at the public hearing of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will be presenting the revisions to the proposal.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, good morning, Commissioners, Dina Posner, Preservation Staff. As noted, this proposal was last heard at the public hearing of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and no action was taken. At the hearing, the Commissioners were supportive of several aspects of the proposal, including the demolition of the freestanding garage structure, the removal of a tree, the installation of aluminum-clad wood windows, and the incorporation of insulation in conjunction with cedar shingle cladding replacement. However, the applicant was asked to re-study three areas of the proposal. One, the massing of the addition, including the roof lines in relation to the historic house. Some Commissioners suggested exploring a hyphen form. Two, the details and scale of the front entrance redesign. And three, the type and amount of hardscaping at the front yard. The applicant has made revisions in response to these comments, which I will show on the following slides. And additionally, one of the Commissioners asked about the shutters being replaced at staff level, and the applicants have confirmed that they will work with staff to make sure that they are properly scaled to the openings. This shows the existing condition at the top, the previous proposal at the center, and the revised proposal at the bottom. The yellow highlights the areas of changes. The addition has been reduced in size and its massing modified, including the introduction of a hyphen and the reorientation of the gable. Additionally, the color of the garage doors is now brown to relate to the finish of the siding. The proposed design of the entrance now features a hood roof on brackets in lieu of a portico and slightly increasing the size of the door opening in lieu of the two side lights. The stoop is proposed to be rebuilt, but more in keeping with the size of the existing stoop rather than the wider stoop that was previously proposed. The proposed stoop also includes a bluestone landing and treads. This shows the existing condition at the left, the proposal, the previous proposal at the center, and the revised proposal on the right. And the yellow again indicates where the addition has been reduced in size. The addition has been set back further from the front facade and a notch created at the front and the rear, breaking up the massing. Additionally, the east side of the rear addition has been set back from the main east facade, so it is no longer a continuous plane. Stepping stones will be installed instead of a walkway adjacent to the driveway. The driveway will be brick instead of concrete matching the proposed walkway paving, and evergreen plantings will be added shielding sightlines to the driveway. This shows the reduced height of the addition, its changes in form, the introduction of the hyphen, and the elimination of the second gable at the rear of the house. The placement and grouping of window and door openings has been changed, and the amount of regrading has also been reduced. The next two slides will show existing condition photos as well as photo montages of the previous proposal and the revised proposal. The top row is the view from the front of the house, and the bottom row is the view from further down Hollywood Avenue looking west. The top row here is from Manor Road behind the house, and the bottom row is again from Hollywood Avenue looking east. That completes the presentation, and the applicant and owner are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dana. Commissioners, do we have any questions, either for Dana or for the owners? Okay. So I think, and I'm just double-checking, but I'm pretty sure we did not receive any additional, yeah, we didn't receive any additional comments on this one. receive any additional, yeah, we didn't receive any additional comments on this one. So I think as Dina said, the last time we saw this application, we, um, asked the applicants to reconsider some of the aspects of the, um, addition, portico, and landscaping, and with respect to the addition particularly about the bulk and mass of it, and many people suggested reorienting it and um, and possibly connecting it with a hyphen to create a more sort of distinct, discreet mass, uh, adjacent to the house. So, um, let's begin our discussion. I think the applicants have addressed each of the areas that were raised in the public meeting. Um, Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Uh, yes, thank you, Sarah. Uh, I think, uh, the applicant has been very responsive to the comments, and I think it's really, uh, improved the, uh, project substantially, uh, including some additional changes they made beyond what we'd asked for, all of which I think really makes this fit in much better, uh, in the Douglasston District. Particularly, obviously, the changes to the garage and how it's attached to the house and the uh, to the entrance, which is much more suitable for this particular house. Uh, I, I think everything is, uh, great. I'm happy to approve it as presented.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. Uh, I did not see this one last time, um, but I think, I think the revisions have made it better. Uh, the only comment I would have, and I would not withhold my vote because of it, is if you go to the back facade and the views of the back facade from the adjacent streets, the gable over the, uh, over the door, it's kind of in the middle of the, uh, long run, to me looked a little bit peculiar just because the, this house is so much about like the classic, salt boxy kind of look where you're facing onto a sloped roof, and by turning the gable there, I thought that was kind of curious, but uh, apart, apart from that, I think it's, I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I, I think it's approvable, um, oddly, the, uh, it's probably an optical illusion, but the, the addition on the left actually seems too small. I'm not going to complain.
Okay. Commissioner Chen? Oh, oh, no, sorry, he's here. Commissioner Bland?
See this the first time around. I don't think I would have changed that gable, but I'm also not going to withhold a vote, uh, because I think many other aspects of, uh, of the scheme have been much improved. My, my daughter lives in a, a real version of this, a seventeen fifty-seven version of it. Uh, and I, I, as an architect, added on to it recently. Um, I guess luckily didn't have to go through the out in Connecticut, but nonetheless, I know these houses and they, they follow a very strict regimen. And I think adding on to them is a tricky thing to do. But I think this has got it right. Again, I said I wouldn't, I wouldn't have changed that gable in, but nonetheless, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letfy?
I don't think I was here for this, although maybe I was. But the changes look very, uh, look appropriate to me, and, um, it seems like all pieces now of this home harmonize, uh, much more effectively. The change in color of the garage doors works. The hyphen is helpful, um, the change to the front door roof, I think is also appropriate. I can approve this.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I, I definitely was here the first time, and I know I wasn't alone. I, I, I'm in agreement, um, all, all the changes were responsive and, um, and, and it's appropriate. I would note that this particular slide, we should share this with other applicants. You know, whenever someone comes back to us, you know, the, the putting side by side in one place, all three versions is absolutely, it, it's perfect. Makes it easy for us to, to, to review. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I completely agree, having the side-by-side iterations in one place is just very useful. Great. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree, um, with most of what's been said, and I think it's appropriate and can approve.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh, yes, I agree. I, again, I'm not sure if I was at the original hearing for this, but I think all the changes, um, are very appropriate, and I find it acceptable.
Okay, great, thanks. So I think we have enough to support this. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion?
Uh, sure. Uh, I'll just say that I actually agree with others' comments about the direction of the gable, that it, uh, actually might it would, I'd like the way that, play, play the direction of it originally, but I don't, I think that this is also appropriate, this, uh, and we had asked for it to be minimized or at least reduced in size, so.
Yeah, we, we did specifically ask them to reorient it, so that's how it ended up with the front facing gable, but we, you know, I think they can continue to explore that with the staff outside of this approval today.
Yeah, okay. Uh, anyway, uh, thank you, as, uh, happy to read the motion. Uh, certificate of appropriateness Borough of Queens, OPC twenty-two zero seven five eight six, uh, two three seven, uh, Hollywood Avenue, Douglasston Historic District. A New England Colonial Revival style freestanding house and a contemporary garage designed by uh, Lyle Bullware and, uh, built in nineteen thirty-three. Application is to demolish the garage, remove a tree, modify an entrance, replace windows and a wall, and construct an addition driveway and a curb cut. I note that the building's, uh, style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Douglasston Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the existing garage is an advanced variation, and is only visible as a simply designed background element in limited views from a public thoroughfare. Therefore, its demolition will not detract from the site, streetscape, or historic district. That the hyphen and front gable sections of the proposed addition will be consistent with the forms of early additions, sometimes added to houses of this style and will support the primacy of original massing of the house. That the addition will be set back from the plane of the front facade, enlarging below the second floor level of the house and will have a subordinate presence. It's a proposed solid-to-void ratio, plating materials, penetration pattern, finishes and details of the addition will be consistent with such aspects of the original house, therefore helping to thereby helping to maintain an overall unified commission, uh, composition. That the placement of the garage's vehicular entrances at the street, uh, facing the side of the addition adjacent to the side of the house will be in keeping with the variety of placements of garage entrances that houses throughout the historic district. That the simple design and neutral finish of the garage doors will be harmonious with the house, and their slightly separate placement will break down the scale of the garage. That within deans from public thoroughfares, the limited height, simple roofline, and notch footprint at the rear portion of the addition will recall the scale and form of secondary facades and early extensions found at this house, uh, at houses of this age and style. That the proposed windows will match the historic windows in terms of configurations, operation, and finish, and the change in material from wood to metal, wood, uh, metal clad wood will not be perceptible when seen from public thoroughfares through, across the yards. That the insulation of concealed insulation will greatly improve the energy efficiency of the building with only a slight and uniform change to the projection of the siding and its relationship to the depth of the windows and doors. That the proposed driveway and curb cut will be well scaled to the house and a site and, uh, consistent with other driveways and curb cuts throughout the, a streetscape in terms of placement, materials, and finish. That the driveway will be, uh, typical and with that, and there's a curb line with the remainder of its footprint screened by evergreen plantings. That the removal of existing, the existing unhealthy tree will help address a potential, uh, has potentially hazardous condition. That the planting of new trees will help return the presence of mature trees to the site over time. That the existing main entrance is not unique or representative of exceptional details of craftsmanship, and that the widening of the opening and the proposed wood door and hood and steps will form a simple and unified composition, which is compatible with the, uh, house's austere character inconsistent with the types of early alterations sometimes found with houses of this ancient style. Uh, however, I recommend that the staff continue to work with the applicant on the
Yeah, Diana, I think, well, I, we have enough to vote it as is, but we, I think that the, yeah, we'll have them just if they, um, would, would just private, continue outside of this approval to, if they want to continue to explore that roof line.
Fine, I, I just wanted to let, but ma- make it possible for them if they wanted to reorient, uh, to have to come back to us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved, and should you wish to continue to explore the roof line as some of the Commissioners have suggested today, please, uh, continue to work with the staff on that. All right, we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Next item is public meeting item number two, LPC twenty-two dash zero nine one eight six. This is an application for an amendment. It's in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block two thirty-one, Lot nineteen, one eleven Hick Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an apartment hotel designed by Emery Roth, built in nineteen thirty. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness twenty-one dash zero one three one four for the installation of a bulkhead and chimney flues. Uh, the staff will be presenting the revisions, uh, but then the applicant will make some remarks after we open the proceedings.
Okay, so why don't we actually just open the proceedings now, just so that can be seamless? So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
We'll move.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so now the applicants may speak seamlessly after the staff presents.
Good morning Commissioners, Leanne Pollock, Preservation Staff. This item's one eleven Hick Street. It's located on the east side of Hick Street between Court and Pineapple Street. You see it in red here. At the July sixteenth, twenty nineteen, public hearing and meeting, the Commissioners reviewed and approved the application to construct a rooftop addition here, extend flues, and install railings at the roof. This exonometric shows that Commission approval. Here's the previously approved elevation. The elevator bulkhead seen here was originally designed to resemble a traditional water tower, hence the vertical unfinished wood slat cladding that was originally approved as well. The flue extensions seen here were originally approved as stainless steel. The applicant is now requesting to change the cladding materials for that um, elevator bulkhead and for the, the flues. And this slide shows the materials palette for the various rooftop installations. Due to the height of the bulkhead and location on the building, the building code does not permit use of combustible, combustible materials in this location. Um, so the applicant is now seeking to install, uh, vertical slats of weathered steel seen here. So this was originally approved wood, now proposed weathered steel. Um, and they are also now requesting to approve the cladding at the flue, uh, originally approved stainless steel seen here, now proposed weathered steel seen here. The applicant has developed a few comparison slides of the originally approved wood versus uh, the proposed weathered steel cladding over time. This slide shows the steel at installation, day one, and aged two years on the right. And this slide is, uh, same time comparison of the wood, so unfinished wood at day one, and then the aged wood after about two years. And then this slide compares both at day one and then both materials aged, so the steel on the left and the wood on the right. And again, another exonometric just to show the locations where the materials are proposed to change, the elevator bulkhead here and this flue extension here. The applicant installed a mock-up of the proposed weathered steel panel at the building. You can see that here. Following is a series of photos from the surrounding area showing both a street-level view and a zoomed-in view of the mock-up panel. So you can see that here. Um, here are the views that they took photos from. So again, from street level, and then the zoomed-in view from the intersection of Clark and Henry. This is from the intersection of Clark and Monroe, zoomed out and zoomed in. And from Cadman Plaza Park and Pineapple Walk, um, zoomed out and zoomed in. Following is a series of renderings showing the originally approved wood and stainless steel cladding, followed by the proposed weathered steel cladding. So this was their mock-up that they originally, um, put up, and in dark red lines are the actual volumes that are proposed for the bulkhead and flues. Here are all the locations where they've done renderings from. So I'll flip through these relatively quickly. Um, so this is the originally approved cladding material, uh, what it would look like with the new cladding. Originally approved. New cladding. Originally approved. New cladding. Originally approved. With the new cladding. There are a couple of these. Um, and this, again, just shows where the cladding is proposed to change and the new proposed materials. Um, so that concludes the presentation, and now Yarka Ingles would like to say a few words about the project. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, uh, you did a a very clear job. I mean, thi- this is just to say, um, and, and of course, it's, it's to my own surprise that we've been working on this for so long, but things, uh, things are complicated, uh, on the thirtieth floor in a landmarked, uh, neighborhood. But, but, um, uh, es- essentially, the only reason we are asking for this is because of the, um, non-flammable material requirement. We try to find a, um, material that we believe is visually almost exactly the same. It, it's probably a slight, a tad warmer in the hue, but I think the saturation and the, the color is, 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 is also native to the, the, the water, the water towers of, uh, of, of Brooklyn Heights. Uh, and, um, and, and in that sense, the only reason we are asking to to modify the, the flues as well, or the, the vent stacks, is, is simply that that it is probably also a more native material, uh, the, the weathered steel, and, and then we have two, two objects that somehow, um, match each other. May- maybe as the last thing, you can go to them, Leanne, if you, if you can go to the last image where you see the silhouette, uh, from across the river. I think you click.
Is that in the appendix?
I think it's in the appendix, if you go like
Yep.
Four slides more. It's, it's simply the last slide, I believe. Because I, I, I think in many ways, and, and here, exactly, here we're showing it, um, I, I think the, the, the way you'll see it from, uh, from the sea and from most vantage points is really as a, as a gentle silhouette on the sky. And I think when you come up close, it is really an indigenous material, and we, we did show this poster, I haven't had it here. I, I think when you look at all the water towers that characterize, uh, Brooklyn Heights, uh, that, that, they come in a whole array of different materials, and, and one frequent one is actually weathered steel, so we, we, we're simply asking for this because we believe it's the most, the most simple and most, um, uh, like honest and, and straightforward, uh, response to the, to the unexpected fire code.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? About this request to change the materials? Okay, so I think, um, we'll move to our discussion, and for that, I just want to note that we did receive an email in opposition. An email in opposition that also attached another email that opposed the original application. So that those uh have been shared with the commissioners in advance of today's hearing uh meeting. Okay, so let's um begin our discussion. I'm starting to send you all requests unmute. And so. This was presented. We approved an addition with an elevator bulkhead that it was uh disguised as a. Water tower and also raising the flues and um the. The water tower element was to be clad in wood and the flues in stainless steel and. As we've heard, because of the building code, the non-combustible material is uh required. So they are proposing a weathered steel. I think showed that there are other examples of those in Brooklyn on on water towers, and I think that explains that the. They are changing the flues to match to keep it simple and harmonious at the top of the roof. So we'll begin our discussion on those. So we're just looking at materials today. Uh so Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um well, um I think the controversial part of this might have been the the um. Uh visibility uh above the roof uh bulkhead at all. But we seem to have passed that milestone some time ago, so. I think for me, uh it's not controversial at all uh to replace uh the wood uh with a uh. With the steel, the weathering steel that will, I think, uh as proved by the architect, uh begin to look pretty much like wood uh over over time. Um I think it's important that that this have a sort of a matte kind of uh final finish. I don't know that that was. Described exactly, but I think uh any shininess with this steel would uh would be wrong. So that's the only caveat I had. Otherwise, I'm fine with this.
Okay, and you're comfortable with the flues matching?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
Um. I I. Fred, I like your idea about having a matte finish to uh. So that it's a little more understated. I would also suggest that the color just be a little lighter. If possible, let the applicant work with staff in it, because I think. In the prior version, it receded a little more um into the sky, and that would be my preference.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Um I I'm actually okay with this as is.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yeah, I think that I am too. The I think the replacement of wood with steel is entirely acceptable. And even though it's maybe a little bit darker, I think that's just fine. And the fact that it resembles the wood is very interesting and the. And the kind of the profile of the of the surface is interesting, but I don't think it needs to resemble the wood. I mean, I think it is fine as it is and interesting. And I think for the flues to be the same materials acceptable, so approval.
Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh yes, I agree with the last two commissioners. I think it's provable as is. I think the weathered steel is a good choice. And I think that both both elements should match.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, uh I agree. I think this is very appropriate in terms of material for both the uh uh rooftop accretions and I also. Uh think, you know, that uh this this water towers are very diverse, and this will fit in very appropriately.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Uh yeah, I agree. I think it's appropriate as is. I think that uh if it's if if they're using real Corten type steel, it will. Will not be shiny, most likely. It will vary a lot. It's kind of, it's not like a stain. It it kind of is, it's rust. Um and it it'll vary a little bit based on orientation and and uh other environmental factors, which I think lends to its. Charm. Anybody who's seen a a Richard Sarah that wasn't in the Federal Plaza will 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 probably understand the uh. Look, um I think that the um substitution is 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 acceptable. Uh because this isn't really a water tower. The water towers, one of the reasons why I think that the the use of wood in water towers is important is. Kind of like cast iron and terracotta. It's one of those trades that um is uh. Iconic in New York and should be perpetuated if if possible. Uh but in this case, where it's not really a water tower in a classic sense, I think it's totally okay, and I think it's okay that they match.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I I think it's okay too. I it I'm a little disappointed that um. They can't use the wood because I I thought that was a very clever idea. Um we we have used a. Brush-on treatment on woods uh to render them fireproof. And actually, to test it. I shot a blowtorch on a piece that we had had done for ten minutes, and it did not ignite. Um unfortunately, I I think perhaps New York City hasn't gotten to the point where they can okay things like that yet. You know, we drag on. Um in any case, I I agree with Fred. It needs to be a matte finish, but I I think it's approvable as presented.
Okay, that's great. Okay, so I think we have a consensus. I'll go ahead and make the motion on this one. In the matter of docket number. Whoops. Twenty-two dash zero nine one eight six one eleven Hicks Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, an apartment hotel designed by Emory Roth and built in nineteen thirty. This is an application to amend certificate of appropriateness twenty-one zero one three one four for the installation of a bulkhead and chimney flues. And I recommend approval. I note that the building style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. And I off also note that the cladding of the elevator bulkhead in wood is previously approved by the commission is not permitted under applicable building codes. And therefore, an alternative non-combustible cladding needs to be determined, and I recommend approval. Finding that the size, scale, and placement of the previously approved bulkhead and flues will not change, that the proposed weathered steel. Rain screen has a vertical articulation that adds refinement, while still recalling the industrial character of a water tower, which was the inspiration for the original design. That the brown color of the weathered steel is a neutral earth tone, which in certain light will be similar to aged cedar. And that uh cladding the flues in the similar material will help the rooftop accretions uh. Be more harmonious and therefore recede or blend away from view. And um but I do recommend this, that the finish be a matte finish, and that the applicants work with the staff to ensure that that finish can be achieved. All right, Commissioner um. Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Hi.
Commissioner Bland.
Hi.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Oh.
Commissioner Chapin.
Hi.
Commissioner Chan. Oh, not here. Commissioner Devonshire.
Hi.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Hi.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Hi.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Hi.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is public meeting item number three, LPC twenty-two dash zero three one seven seven. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block seven nineteen, lot sixty-six. Four forty-two West Twenty-Second Street in the Chelsea Historic District. This is an Italianate-style row house built in eighteen fifty-five. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. This was last presented at the public hearing of May third, twenty twenty-two, and no action was taken at that time. Uh the staff will be presenting the revisions to the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Lowry, Preservation Staff. So the property is located on the southern side of West Twenty-Second Street between Tenth and the Ninth Avenue. And. Uh their previous uh certificate of appropriateness was issued uh several years ago for the restoration of the front facade, a rooftop addition and a rear addition. Uh here we see the context of the rear yards, sorry, the rear facades of the subject property uh here. Uh you can see with uh the chimney uh and this very sort of uh disarticulated uh disjointed sort of rear facade line. Uh just some more uh context photographs. Uh there were some minor changes to the rooftop additions, minor changes to the fenestration, um as well as an addition of uh some uh railings. Which are required for the HVAC units uh to be co-compliant. Uh here we see the original uh proposal uh that was submitted to the commission uh several years ago. Uh this was the uh submission of the. Uh uh the previous version uh earlier this year. Uh the commissioners had several uh concerns about this uh proposal. Mainly uh about the proposed rear facade, uh about a sort of a strong uniform design. Of the rear facade, which is not typical for rear facades at row houses, uh and that the proposed massing. Uh does not recognize the volume of the original building. And uh there needs to be some vertical expression in the design at the corners, uh particularly as the windows, which uh went straight to the sidewalls. Uh so here's a revised proposal for the uh rear facade. Um as you can see, the strong uniform design of the brick corbelled piers has been limited to just the rear addition. Uh the design of the upper floor has been uh modified uh to incorporate sort of stronger brick corners and piers at the edges. And a simple brickwork uh with uh smaller punched openings for windows. Uh and at the rear addition and at the rooftop addition, a a simple uh brick withes has been added to encapsulate the corners of the windows. Uh and here just an axon of the previously approved uh design. Uh what was submitted to the commission earlier this year. And uh the idea uh that uh as you can see from the axon, and another issue that we had is that the um. The massing has been modified, so the upper floor has been pushed back to what had been previously approved uh several years ago. And also, the uh rooftop addition has been pushed back uh from that uh new datum point, that new plane. Um so volumetrically, it's more uh responding to the concerns raised about uh the original massing. Uh and then sort of the old uh design. Uh the proposed new design. And and just getting through the details of the old design and currently what we have here. So there, as you can see, the. Uh vertical element of the uh brick withes at the uh penthouse and rear addition. And then the more substantial uh brick corner piers at the corners, uh so that all the windows now are encapsulated. And uh just to show again the plane uh of how uh this is now being pushed back to the element of what the. Original uh proposal was in and then in the green line, that's sort of the neighboring uh the adjacent property. And thank you very much, and I will pass it over for any questions to the architect Antonio D'Oranzo Blue Ark.
Okay, well, let's see if we have any questions. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions, so I think we might just move into our discussion. I will note for the record that. We received a a letter in opposition from the Historic District Council, which uh was shared with the commissioners in advance of today. Um so commissioners, I am starting to send you requests to unmute so that we can begin our discussion. And as Richard said, this um application, when it was first presented to us, was to. Um modify a previously approved addition, set of additions to this building to create a new full height. And rooftop addition, rear yard addition connected to a rooftop addition. And at that time, we all had comments about the cumulative effect of the rear yard addition and rooftop addition overwhelming the building. And we asked that they reduce the rear yard addition uh by a floor and set the uh rear fa- uh rooftop addition back from the rear facade. We also asked them to uh rethink the uh re-study the mechanical equipment to ensure that they wouldn't be visible from a public way. And so as Richard has presented, they've come back today, um reducing the addition by a floor, keeping the plane of the. Top floor in the previously approved uh location with three openings. And um the rooftop addition is set back three feet from that plane, and the mechanical uh equipment has been shifted to make it not visible from a public way. Um and in addition, as Richard said, they've also um added some verticals piers at the edges of the design. Um but now that it's a discreet addition that I think that that commissioners felt the design was interesting, and that maybe as a discreet addition that didn't rise to full height of the building. It uh might need so much more work. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
And um what about the retention of window configuration at the top floor? Uh as our typical. What we typically.
Right. Richard, do you want to speak to the location of these windows relative to the original or Cory? Cory, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, um you know, the the openings themselves may be in their original location. I will say that the facade has had all of its sills. Uh replaced with brick sills, its stone lintels replaced with steel lintels, the parlor window openings were shortened. So I I'm not a hundred percent positive the top floor openings are the actual size, but uh the facade has had a lot of changes over the years. Um that may not affect your thinking on whether you want to retain them as is. I don't recall that all commissioners uh. Thought that they must be retained in the existing condition, and I I recall some perhaps entertaining uh more of a echo of that or a recollection of it. But in general, the existing condition is at least somewhat altered with replacement of a lot of the uh elements above and below the openings.
Right, so I think that's why there was maybe some more flexibility of how that top floor was expressed, but we did want the plane to be maintained. Okay, are there questions? Okay, so let's uh begin our discussion on this one. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um. Again, I'm I I don't know if I was here, but I might have been. Um and I do want to say that, you know, the applicant actually made a bold move in terms of um. Uh and I'm sure this was discussed, uh presenting a completely different kind of design. For a rear yard addition and uh the. I think that the requests by the the commission were appropriate in terms of hiding the mechanicals. Setting back um the rooftop addition and also losing a floor. And then uh setting back the top floor so that the massing um is a little more uh. Harmonious in terms of the surroundings, but also reflects more of the original massing of the building. I don't have a, I I also believe that the the addition of the bricks at the edge was a good request and that their response was. Of adding a row was helpful in terms of framing the window and uh again, making the entire. Facade or rear facade more cohesive. I think it's very, you know, it's unexpected. Um as a as a design for a rear yard, but I think it's very well done, very well composed and handsome. Um I I don't think the visibility, there's any real visibility here, and um I could approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, um just as a preliminary matter, I think we did actually discuss um last time, the uh fact that this building is not part of a row. Um and that's uh why we didn't uh we weren't so insistent upon the retention of the um um openings at the uh top level there. Um and uh and I think they responded to all of our um all of our specific comments, and um I think it's appropriate as it is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm nearly sure that I was not here for this the last. But I do think that um. the reduction in height is likely a good thing, as I look at the previous presentation. I think it's actually too bad that they were, that they had to add that extra brick on the side. I mean, clearly, the idea of the design was this kind of open-ended sides and the expression of that. But so I think that I wouldn't be surprised if they're pretty. It's a big compromise, big compromise, even though it's very narrow. But I can approve it as it's presented.
Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I definitely was here for the last iteration of this. I think that they responded to the comments that we made. And, you know, it isn't a very unusual application for such a prominent rear facade, but it is interesting. And I think, again, that, you know, because it's not part of a row and it's sort of discreet in its placement, that the brick corbling is, can be found to be appropriate. And I think the top two floors, setting them back and making them much more streamlined is an improvement, and I can find it appropriate as is.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree with the points made by Commissioner Holford Smith. It's, you know, it's a very modern approach for this kind of building, but it isn't part of a row and it's, it's a composition itself, it is well-designed. So I can, as we have, you know, supported a number of modern designs in the, in the rear, which are not visible, I can support this as presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I think it's appropriate as presented. I think it's the extenuating circumstances that others have raised allow for this to perhaps be a more extreme makeover than we would normally approve.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum? I mean, sorry, Commissioner Devonshire?
Close. I think it's appropriate as presented.
Okay, thanks. And Commissioner Bland?
You know, I've been proud for 14 years to support contemporary architecture in historic districts. I thought, I think that's one of mine. One of the things I've been most proud about is being able to support that kind of architecture contextually within a historic district. But I can't support this. And the reason has nothing to do with the small details that we might, we might have asked for. I don't also recall being here. Either the commissioners are getting amnesia or fewer, fewer of us that I think have been attending hearings all along, but I don't particularly recall this. The reason I don't support it is, has nothing to do with these, these small details. The reason is it simply looks like a commercial building within the historic, within the residential district. It looks like an office building or something like that. So for me, it's a kind of a simple but overarching idea. And I obviously am a minority in the feeling here, but that's what I feel and that's how I'm going to have to vote.
Hey, great. Thank you for your comments. So, but I think, as you said, we do have enough to support this. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you go ahead and read the motion?
Sure. In the matter of Doc. 22-03177, 442 West 22nd Street, the Chelsea Historic District, an Italianate-style row house built in 1855, the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the work will not eliminate any significant architectural or historic features, that the rooftop addition and railing will only be visible over the side facade of the house from limited views, that the rooftop addition will be moderate in size and setback from the front and rear facades, thereby not overwhelming the house and helping to maintain a sense of its original massing, that the proposed rear addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the construction of a three-story rear addition will not overwhelm the volume of the existing row house, that the proposed rear addition will not extend beyond the rear facade of the adjacent building, and the depth will be consistent with the average depth of other rear additions found within the central green space, that the building is not part of a row, and the new addition will not disrupt a consistent row of rear facades, that the design of the reconstructed upper floor of the rear facade will feature simple punched openings that are typical of other row houses within the historic district, that the design of the rear addition featuring an expressive composition of protruding red brick divided into three bays of punched masonry openings with metal windows and doors is a carefully conceived contemporary design, which will harmonize with typical masonry rear yard additions found at other buildings of this type within this block and this historic district.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
I second it.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Nay.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With eight in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Right, so that's approved, and we'll now move to our public hearing agenda.
Okay, we'll start with public hearing item number one, LPC 23-02025, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 1444, Lot 13, 341684th Street in the Jackson Heights Historic District. This is an Anglo-American garden home style attached house designed by Robert Tappan and built in 1927. And the application is to replace roofing material.
Hey, commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing and the staff will be taking you through the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners, Michelle Crer and Preservation Staff. This application is for the replacement of the existing mixed clay tile and asphalt roofing throughout the roof of the subject property with a new asphalt shingles. Here you can see the existing conditions at the front and rear facades of the house. On the left is the 1940s tax photo. Center is the designation photo, and then again on the right is the house in 2022. Here you can see the house's location within the Jackson Heights Historic District on the west side of 84th Street between 34th and 35th avenues. The house is part of a row of five with two additional rows of five to the south, making up the Plymouth Houses on this street. These slides show some context within this group of houses. As you can see, some of the houses on the block have had portions of their clay tiles replaced by asphalt shingles prior to the designation of the historic district, as shown by the red arrows. So here, the owner is proposing to replace the existing tiles due to the deterioration and issues with water infiltration. Here you can see cracking, scaling and broken tiles at the existing roof. And some interior water damage. Here are some additional details of the existing roof. In this aerial image, the owner has highlighted a few areas where asphalt shingles have been installed over time, pointed out with the red arrows. You can also see the common driveway and adjacent apartment building. In this photo taken from the adjacent Ivy Court apartment building, you can see some of those shingles along with the two minutes roofing membrane here and as also original clay tiles. Some of the tiles are missing while others have broken and fallen into the gutter. And here is another view of asphalt shingles at the roof and also at this dormer at the rear facade. Most of the areas where asphalt shingles have been installed are not visible or are only minimally visible from the street. This slide shows the product that the owner is proposing to use. And this slide shows the dimensions of the existing and proposed roofing. And here are just some additional details about the proposed roofing material. Here are some additional locations within the historic district where asphalt shingles have been installed, either legally as replacements or prior to designation of the historic district. The owner is here and would like to discuss their proposal in more detail and can also answer your questions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Fong. I'm the owner. We live in the historic home and we want to do right to preserve and maintain it. We appreciate the character and beauty of the historic, original, of the original historic roof tiles. However, we encountered many obstacles in finding it in kind replacement. Roof tiles here on the right is nine by 12 by half inch, that's the front. And the back, you can see, sometimes there's a company name stamped there telling you where it, where, which company made it, but it's not there, so we don't know where this tile came from. We contacted numerous roofers and very few of them work with clay tiles. Those who do are not able to source these tiles locally, these exact tiles. And I have concerns regarding using the old salvage tiles. The original ones on our roof is almost 100 years old and they are weathering and damaged. A roofer found similar tiles down south, not the exact, and he estimated them to be about 70 years old. Luigi, a reputable tile company in Ohio that makes quality tiles, their warranty is for 75 years. So salvage tiles, they have an unknown history origin, there's no warranty, so it doesn't really make sense to install, to me, to install salvage tiles. Additionally, their original roof tiles that were installed in our property, they were installed in an improper faulty manner. So roof tile should be installed, the shingle roof tile should be installed to overlap in three layers, which you can see on the right. The third layer overlaps the nail heads of the first layer, and that's how it should be. However, our installation only overlaps in two layers, so that makes our roof less waterproof. So again, it doesn't make sense for me to install tile again in a faulty manner. So I searched the internet and I couldn't find these exact tiles anywhere in production in the US. And it's essential for the size, color, texture and exposure to match the neighbor's roof, which is adjoining. We went out to Mediterranean Roofing and Designs in Great Neck. They specialize in Tejas Borha tiles, and they do not have a match. Can you go to next slide? Luigi out in Ohio, they also do not have an exact match. So in the corner, you can see our tile. I put it there for comparison. The original tile has an exposure of nine inches wide by eight to nine inches high by a half inch thick. And there's the dimensions on the tile, of the tile on the side, nine by 12 by a half inch. And the closest tiles that Luigi has that match, not that could match, would be the Century Shake, which is the first one over there. The exposure is 10 inches by 11 and a half inches by one inch. And the dimensions are 10 and a half by 14 and a half by one. And then the Williamsburg, which is eight and a quarter by 11 by seven eighths inches thick, and that's the exposure. And the dimensions are nine by 14 by seven eighths. So these could be available in the color similar to ours. We have to send a sample in for them to match. However, these tiles are not available until spring at the earliest, and they have different exposures and sizes and would not align with the neighbor's roof. And the prices have gone up 12%, 12% since August. Go to next slide. So we would like to respect and follow the LPC regulations, but any kind of material was not readily readily available and is very expensive. We feel the best way to preserve our historic home is to install quality architectural asphalt shingle as soon as possible as water is leaking into our home. There is already asphalt shingle on the block and on our roof. The proposed architectural asphalt shingle and terracotta would convey the visual characteristics of the original clay tile. There is variation in color, indications of texture and dimension, and they would blend in well in the block. We have been waiting to remediate the roof situation since our application in August. Waiting additional months would result in neglect and further damage, as well as crate hazards due to mold and tiles falling off the roof. We can expect a lot more rain in the coming months due to global warming and inclement weather is fast approaching. Our historic, our historic home needs a sound roof for protection from the elements and further damage. We desire to secure and preserve our historic home as best as we can. But we do have limited resources. Priority goes to the installation of a bathroom on the first floor for my elderly 90-year-old mother, and to install the roof to protect the home. There's also additional exterior work to be done. A tile roof installation is significantly more expensive than the proposed asphalt shingle upwards of $70,000 compared to $12,000 for asphalt shingle. I have been unable to work for the past five years due to chronic health issues. Doctors are still trying to figure it out. The mold in the home makes my symptoms worse, and my husband currently only works part-time. In closing, it is our hope for a fair, reasonable, understanding decision. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you approached any of the other terracotta companies. There's Gladding McBean, and there's Boston Valley that's in Aurora, New York.
No, I haven't. Gladding, can you say those again?
Sorry?
Can you repeat those?
Gladding McBean, who probably made the original tiles. We've gotten, we've gotten tiles from them in this, in this variegated surface flat shingle. And Boston Valley, which is in Aurora, New York.
No, I haven't.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and just also sort of following up on that, have you looked at other alternative materials besides asphalt that could replicate the tile? Sort of like there's a faux slate that's sort of a rubberized recycled material.
I spoke to roofers about composite and they were not very excited about it. They thought that it wouldn't withstand the weather in the northeast so well and that the companies are sort of new and they can disappear after we install them. I didn't look into the particular one that you're talking about.
Okay, great, thanks. Commissioner Chapin? You're speaking, Diana. Just unmute.
Right, thank you. I wanted to ask you or the staff if any of the replacement shingles were actually approved by the commissioner, they just were prior to designation?
So I can answer that. Most of the ones that were shown were prior to designation based on designation photos. However, there was one example, or two examples, I think, where asphalt shingles that were installed prior to designation have since been replaced with this style of architectural shingles.
But did that come before the commission?
No, if the, if the clay tiles had been replaced prior to designation at the staff level, they can be replaced with something that more closely, that more closely matches the historic, but does not need to match it in terms of material.
Okay, so in effect, any of the ones that were there prior to designation, the staff could authorize something similar?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, why don't we move to public testimony? If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Gregory Colla to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We received one sign up prior to the hearing. That will be Lucy Levine. So Lucy, if you are ready, I'm going to promote you to panelist now. I don't seem to be able to promote to panelists. Would somebody be able to make me the host?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So Lucy, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. So please just state your name for record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC appreciates the challenges of finding terracotta roof tiles to match 100 year old existing versions of them for this sort of restoration and repair project. But opposed use of asphalt to be inappropriate. HGC would ask the commission and the applicant to work on replacing the full terracotta roof with new terracotta material that is as close to the original as possible. We believe there are many products and assemblies available on the market for this project. Given how well the roof has held up over time, replacement with an in-kind assembly should easily last an additional 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lucy. And next up, we'll have John Graham from VSNY. John, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. So if you could just state your name for public record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today I am not speaking as a member of the Board of the Victorian Society in New York, but as a former staff member of the LPC. One of the applications I received as a staff person 20 years ago was for roof replacement at a similar house in Jackson Heights built with an English tile roof. The owner of one half of the duplex had replaced his English tile with asphalt shingles and got an LPC violation. When it was assigned to me, I met with the owner and did considerable research on this type of roofing. After a lot of research, I did, it was determined that at the time, no one in the United States was manufacturing flat English style roof tiles. There was some evidence that the English tiles had actually been imported when these buildings were built by the Queensborough Development Corporation. Importing them from England would cost at that time, 20 years ago, $35,000. The owner showed, showed me documents proving that his half of the duplex had cost $150,000, making that $35,000 prohibitive. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, John. I will note that there do not appear to be any further hands raised. And I will also say that Queens Community Board Three recommended approval for this application.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard. It's fine.
I don't have any comments except that I searched and I did find the only places I saw on the internet that had tiles that looked like this were from the UK.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only thing I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, Commissioners, so if there are no final questions, I will ask you all to mute in our discussion. Right, Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. I know we have already had a number of questions for the applicant about sourcing, so I suspect that will come up in our discussion. So we'll begin now. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start this one?
Sure, this is a tough one. I know the Gladys McBean does make the English type tiles because we've, we've used them on two buildings that are properties of the Monmouth County Park System in New Jersey. But that said, even in non-pandemic situations, it really is kind of a take a number and wait for at least nine months or a year before you would get supplied with these things. And so I am, I am sympathetic to the applicant in their, in their choice to eschew using terracotta, although again, the, the warranty on a terracotta tile is going to be 75 to 80 years and the warranty on asphalt shingles is probably half or even less than that. So what, what I would hope that they would do is try to find with staff a suitable substitute, more visually appropriate, but ultimately, if that's not possible, I would be okay with the asphalt shingles because if the roof is leaking now, then they, they probably, given the age of these buildings, they probably have a lead paint issue on the interior. And so whatever we can do to seal the building envelope is, is what needs to be done.
Thank you, Commissioner Glad.
Yeah, I think.
Does this help with plan exam? No plan exam, just a question. Just get me, get, get me back.
I can't hear. Somebody should mute there. I think Michael has put, put his finger on the problem. I mean, either it's a sourcing problem or it isn't. It's to me as if this very resourceful owner has certainly gone to some great lengths greater than we normally would see to, to research this. But it could be that through contacts at the Landmarks Commission or other places, we might have other sources. That's only part of the problem. The other problem frankly is the cost. And I know that we're not supposed to ever think about the cost, but I think it's unrealistic for us not to be pressed on this sort of a subject. This is important also because it's, it's part of a row of many other houses, which to some degree have already changed because they weren't subject to landmarks at that time or will have to change in the future and they are subject to landmarks. So I think I, I just fall on the side that Michael has suggested that maybe we have to, but again, I caveat this with perhaps there are sources of, of foam materials that where the Landmarks Commission staff can help. So maybe that's where we should throw it, but I think this is a, this is a complicated issue. And to pretend that that things that might have been initially even way back 100 years ago imported from England. And that's what we're suggesting that the owners do in the future because there's no other source locally. That's unreasonable. And I think the Landmarks Commission always has to be at least reasonable in terms of what we're demanding of, of our constituents, so to speak, who reside in landmark districts.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, um, thanks, Michael and Fred. I actually agree with both of you, both about what the ideal solution would be for this and then what the reasonable solution is under the circumstances. I, I also want to commend the applicant for like taking, doing an incredible amount of research to try to find these, these clay tiles. And then even after coming with this presentation and an argument for why she, she, you know, couldn't make it work, being open to, to looking at, at existing sources and, you know, faux sources. So thank you. I know we all appreciate this. And I do think, you know, one of the most important things, it would be wonderful if we could do the clay tiles. And I don't want to use the cost word. Someone else has to, already did. But I do think that when we look at these projects, we have to take many things into account. And we do have to seriously consider how long this roof is going to be exposed to the elements and what further damage could be incurred to compromise the integrity of the applicant's home. So I guess, so I join Michael and Fred in feeling that it would be wonderful for the, it's important for the applicant to do a little extra research, working with staff to see what might be possible, both in terms of existing clay or foam materials. But I, I don't think that research should go on too long, given, given the current condition of the, of the roof. And I do feel like there is a precedent already for asphalt shingles in the neighborhood. And I could make a compromise and approve this if the other solutions don't work.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Concern I have is that if we do what we looks like we're about to do, we're essentially saying that the, the clay tiles will be gone from this group of houses sometime in the, in the foreseeable future. So I'm not quite there yet and ready to say that's it. I'm, I'm done with it. I think there is, in addition to figuring out whether there's another alternative material, whether there are sources, other sources, parsing out various locations on the roof, which would be most visible, I think is something that also would have to, have to be considered. So there might, while the architectural asphalt might actually be acceptable in certain areas, there might be limited areas where, where we would require, where I would require, sorry, the, the clay tiles. So I am, I'm not ready to, to find this appropriate.
I can't hear you, Sarah, but I'm assuming that you're calling on me.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Um, I think I'm in agreement with Commissioner Gustafson in this case. It sounds as though what we've understood, especially from Commissioner Devonshire's comments, that a source does exist that is relatively local, American in any event. But that the issue is time and, and cost, but really time. And, and so I think that that's, that's the issue that we, that the applicant needs to understand. The sources seems available, whether or not it can be expedited, I think, is the important thing to determine. I like Commissioner Gustafson's ideas of idea regarding the potential of mixing materials in this case, depending on visibility. And I also really want to understand whether the roof can be sealed in a sense temporarily or for the season in a way that, or, or the, the extent of the leaks and whether or not that can be mitigated or temporarily contained as they are waiting, if it's an issue of time and as they're waiting for the appropriate material. But it seems to me that there has been, have certainly in the, since in the last 20 years, a lot more terracotta production and possibilities and various producers. And that there might be an easier time to, it, it might be easier to find it today than it was previously when the asphalt shingles were approved by landmarks for other projects.
All right, Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh, yes, I mean, I think that the asphalt shingle is sort of the last resort here. I think other commissioners have said the same. I'm wondering if a substitute material, it's actually, I'm looking at a product that's actually a synthetic shake. See, not a, not a, not a slate or a clay tile might be an appropriate substitute material, working with staff. A couple of companies make it, DaVinci and Brava. But actually thinking about audience suggestion, the owner could potentially put down a waterproof roofing system at these areas that could be used over, over winter while, you know, a clay tile was, was ordered and delivered in the spring. That might be an option as well. I think there may be some options there that we should explore before resorting to the asphalt shingle.
Okay, all right, thank you. I mean, in terms of the waterproofing system, is that sort of the, is, does, does that mean the applicant is sort of paying twice to have a roofing, a roofer come and do roofing material to have to have it done?
Potentially, but I mean, normally underneath the roof like this, you would put a waterproof membrane. It wouldn't just rely on the, on the tile. So it isn't duplicative in terms of material, but in terms of contractor coming back, it would be.
Okay, that's, well, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Okay, so first, I think that obviously applicants should work with the staff on looking into how the roof can be secured from water damage regardless, just because of the, whatever solution is found, it's not going to happen tomorrow. And it may be that in fact, as, as is just being discussed, that there would be a necessary membrane that should be put in first and so forth. This with all the roofs, the shapes and the dormers here, it's going to be a little more, it's not just a flat roof. As in the case of our building, which was not, the roof was just recently redone. So it could be considerably more complicated, though maybe it's not leaking everywhere. But anyway, that's important and it's just work with the staff on the best solution for that. And also to work with the staff on the best, I will say, suitable substitute. Because while I believe that terracotta tiles are, are always better, there's a big but here. Number one, the staff can approve shingles anywhere that they were previously installed. And there are places here which, where it's already previously installed, which means we're never going to have a situation where these rows are all going to return to clay. They know to terracotta tiles. It isn't going to happen. People aren't going to do that because of the expense involved. So I'm concerned about two things. One is the preservation of the building, obviously. And number two is the appearance of the rows. And I think we need to find a solution, the applicant working with the staff with the best possible replacement that can then be approved by staff, hopefully, for other locations when, when they come up that, that can do it without our approval or that we can do. So that we're going to have these rows of houses, which are very, you know, it's the characteristic of the district. These little row houses that occur in various places or larger row houses. And, and to get the roofs to have a similar appearance. I, I don't care what the next door one is right now. I care what the, the row should be and can be in the future. So that's what I would recommend finding, have them work with the staff on the best possible replacement that can become a model for, for this series of row houses. Thank you.
Sarah, you're muted.
I assume you're asking for me, but.
Sorry, I am, yes, I, and I was also going to say that I, I could think Commissioner Devonshire is going to add something. So after you, Michael, we'll go to Commissioner Devonshire.
As is the nature of all things.
Yes.
Given our table configuration that we haven't sat at for two and a half years, but that's, that's beautiful. Okay, no discrimination with what anybody said, 100% agreement. The issue for me with the asphalt shingles is the profile that it gives from the street. If you look from the street at the photographs shown, the clay tiles have a depth, they have a height that creates a shadow line that's very distinctive, that you will completely lose with the asphalt because the asphalt is half as thick, even, even thinner, I'm not sure. So yes, you can see here what distinguishes the, the, the roof is those horizontal shadow lines as well as the color and the, you know, the shape, but it's with that depth. So I think that the, the identification of an alternate material is key. I'm looking at, at, at Anne's suggestion about the DaVinci. I don't know if they have a color that's going to be the right color, but it looks like a great material. But I can also tell you that Echo Star, which makes the rubber fake slate that, that LPC is approved. They make a, a shake. It's called the Niagara Shake. They're made in upstate New York. They're rubber, they're synthetic. They're usually half the price of clay or slate. So I would strongly urge you to investigate Echo Star. So I would strongly urge you to investigate Echo Star.
Thank you, and Commissioner Devonshire?
I'm, I'm sorry, Sarah, but this is just, this is something that we've, we've had to mess around with in our office so much. That I, I just can't. One of the things that I would hope, and, and here I am, you know, mayor of Fantasy Island. If, if in fact, the roof, you know, we, we don't know how many of the tiles, of the extant tiles on this roof are in fact deficient. What percentage of the whole roof? So it, it could be 10%, it could be 20%, which means there's 80% of these tiles are still going to be good. And if they are demolished, then we lose that possible resource. If they are disassembled, you know, it, I know it's probably not possible, but somehow can we. Require that they be salvaged so that perhaps down the road, when another roof needs to be redone. They have this, this attic stock of, of salvaged tiles. Um, the, the, the other thing I, I was going to say about the, the terracotta, I mean. You could order them now and you won't get them in the spring anywhere. Even, even the tile companies in England who used to make these things, they're now a, a custom item. So it, it, that, that is an exhausted possibility. With regard to the thickness, as Michael um, mentioned. We have also for Monmouth County Park System doubled up. On the application of the asphalt shingles, so they do present that profile. It's not something that I love to do, it was something that, that they insisted on. But I, but I would plead with the applicant, who really did do her homework on this, to investigate. Exhaustively investigate whether Gladding McBean can do these, or whether uh, Boston Valley can do it. Um, and, and I would just hope that the, you know, the, the plastic stuff. Um, has, has to me an unacceptable amount of embodied energy in order to make them. And so I have a, a little bit of a problem in terms of sustainability with those things. Asphalt um, has much less. Um, in any case, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get on a hobby horse here and, and go off, but um. Uh, I would, I would just hope that they would try and exhaust, even do even more exhaustive research. And see if these other two companies can come up with an acceptable one. And I would hope that somehow in the future, we could require that anyone removing these things. Disassemble the roofs and, and create somehow a, a stock of these things that could be used. So that 10 years from now, at least one of these houses still has terracotta tiles on the roof. Thank you for indulging me, Sarah.
Great, no, thank you for your, your sharing your experience, it's very helpful. And I think Commissioner Goldblum wants to add something again.
Yeah, and Michael has a great idea, I think we should, we could look at this as like, like we do with slate sidewalks. Um, blue stone sidewalks, I mean, we can ask for a consolidation of the salvaged materials. Into let's say the facade that faces the row. And go for an alternate on the, I mean, this is a big house with a lot of roof, it's uh, it, you know, it, it, and there are, there are breaks. Um, you know, you could say keep the low roof, uh, terracotta and the high roof dormer, but you know, that could be something they could work out with staff. But if, if, you know, salvaging is on the table, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure that it, it's a feasible approach, uh, we might be able to ask for that. You did.
Thank you, the staff has uh, started some conversations on that front. I understand there's a warranty problem when you mix it together, but maybe if it's on the, on a different slope separated by a ridge.
That's where Anne's comment comes in. Because it, it, she's absolutely right, nowadays, you would never, it used to be they installed this over tar paper. Uh, sometimes in sleepers, but nowadays you wouldn't do that. Nowadays, we just put down a, a membrane adhesive roofing mem- uh, material, which itself. Can last as a, as a roof for fit for 20 years. Um, and then they put this, the, the, the layer on top. So uh, I don't think you'd have it, you, I don't think you'd have a warranty issue, because really the, the tiles become decorative.
Okay, I'll go back to Commissioner Devonshire and then Commissioner Chapin.
Just one brief one, Sarah, um, thanks. You know, the, the, the problem, of course, is that any roofing contractor just wants to get in and get out. And so they're going to say you, you can't salvage those things. Um, and so we have to be, the, the applicant slash client is going to have to be very careful to insist. That these things get salvaged, you know, contractors are just going to want to come in, bust it all up, throw it in the dumpster and, and be done with it.
Okay, thank you, and Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, well, I guess I just wanted to say, of course, that I, I also, you know, think that the, the tiles, uh, you know. Would be great to have them preserved on some of these houses on their fronts, if that is possible. Um, I don't know how feasible, what we're talking about is it's, you know, obviously it can be done conceivably. Uh, and part of the problem is we don't have a survey as to where the roof is failing in this particular. Uh, and we also don't have a survey of all the different roofs and how many are, you know, tile and how many aren't. Because obviously applicants have been diligently working on their own house, which I don't blame them for at all. Um, so uh, you know, I'm hoping maybe we can quickly get some more information and. This one, we have a little bit more background to make a final decision, thank you.
Okay. I was going to try to make a motion that encapsulated the discussion today. And that is to uh, work with the staff to further exhaust all sources for the tile. Particularly looking at Gladding Bean, McBean and Boston Valley. And um, and also exploring the idea of mixing it up and doing the tile on a more visible plate. A portion of the roof and asphalt on the non-visible portions. And um, also exploring alternative materials and working with the staff to figure out a solution here. That um, would preserve the integrity of the building and, and still be reasonable. Is that okay with you all if I make a motion that does something along those lines? Okay. All right, and then we can have the staff continue to work with them on the, on this. So let me go ahead and make this motion in the matter of docket number twenty-three dash zero-two-zero-two-five thirty-four sixteen eighty-fourth street. In the Jackson Heights Historic District, an Anglo-American garden home style attached house. Designed by Robert Tappin and built in nineteen twenty-seven. This is an application to replace roofing material. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute. To the special architectural and historic character of the Jackson Heights Historic District. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the replacement of the existing clay tile roof is warranted due to the deteriorated conditions. Um, that the proposed replacement, that replacing the roof will help prevent additional damage to the house due to water infiltration. And um, that working with staff, the use of um, a substitute material. Or uh, tiles mixed with a substitute material and various portions of the roof. Um, will recall the existing clay tiles in terms of texture size and shadow lines. However, I recommend that the applicant continue to work with staff to exhaust all sources for clay tile. Um, and also look at a possible substitute materials that more closely replicate the existing clay tiles. In terms of texture size and shadow lines. And um, and also explore the idea of doing the tile on the visible portions of the roof. And the substitute material on the non-visible portions of the roof if his, if suitable. Um, in kind of replacement is not found. Um, and I think we'll also ask as part of this process that they clearly identify. Um, what percentage of the tiles are salvageable? To see if there's an opportunity to salvage those and to think about sort of a larger programs for the district. All right, Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Absolutely, second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so please continue to work with the staff and we appreciate your care of your designated home. And um, we're happy to work with you to find an appropriate solution that protects the character as well as the, the physical integrity of the house. All right, we'll move to the next hearing item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC twenty-two dash one-two-one-four-zero. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block four forty-three, lot sixty-two. Two eighty-one Carroll Street in the Carroll Gardens Historic District. This is a row house designed by William J. Bedell and built in eighteen seventy-four. And the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and reconstruct the rear facade.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Sarah J, I'm going to give you control of the presentation, if you could just click on it, perfect. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Serge Wam, architect at Atelier Tech Architects. Are we ready?
Yes, please go ahead.
Very good, so the project is twenty-one Carroll Street. We want to make a rooftop uh, access and a real, real addition. So here you have some historic photo, on the left you have the nineteen forty photo, on the right nineteen eighty. Then you do have the photo from the nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-three. And you see here the existing condition, a photo of few weeks ago, which is very similar to nineteen seventy-three. Um, some other photo from Carroll Street. The block, so you see it's on the north side of Carroll Street, mid-block. A few aerial view from Google Earth. So you can see on this photo that there are not a lot of rooftop addition on this block. There are some across the street, but not there. So on the project, uh, we tried to limit as much as possible the rooftop addition, just to provide a bulkhead to access the roof. You see, we got like the inclined roof here to limit as much as possible the views. And on the uh, backyard or rear side, we're having like an extension of about fourteen foot six on the basement and then two level at ten feet. Uh, there's a naming diagram where you see the bulkhead and rooftop extension. The existing section, we have currently a non-historic little addition on the back, which would be demolished and replaced. Uh, so at the basement, the extension is about the size of the existing uh, uh, non-historic addition. Uh, the setback here allows to have like um, a terrace at the parlor floor. And then we build up to the third floor to leave the third floor as existing. So like that we can maintain the reason of the facade on the last story. Uh, the donut, we are lot sixty-two here on twenty-one Carroll. Uh, you see on the contact, there is a series of extension, one story, two story. There are some four stories here on the left, about uh, six, seven uh, buildings left. Uh, this one, they were probably pre-landmark and they are about like twenty-five feet, twenty-two feet extension. And on the right here, the lot uh, seventy-five oh-one, which is two ninety-nine Carroll Street. This is actually a new building, but this is about, you know, close to four story, you will see them on the photo from the back. Uh, so this is our building here. You see there the, the existing uh, um, four stories extension. And then the new building here, which is about four story two. Uh, some view again from the other side. Photo from the building looking uh, toward the back. Looking on the left here and looking on the right. So you see you do have some two-story, one-story, the four-story and four-story on the other side. And some more photo from the rear yard. So on the front facade, uh, currently we are not uh, doing a lot of work. We are planning to uh, at some point restore, uh, restore here the corners. Uh, but for this application, the only thing that we are seeing is the, the bulkhead, which is on the back. So it will not be visible from the street and the railing. Some more photo on the front facade, which is in very good condition. And on the back facade, we would be removing the, the fire stair and removing the lower part of the facade. To provide the, uh, the space for the addition. Uh, some photo on the, on the rear facade with the um, existing addition. The roof, so you have all a series of mechanical equipment on the adjacent buildings. But you can see there is not a lot of um, bulkheads. And the photo, the, the elevation from one side of the building with the bulkhead. We would be providing here some uh, kind of flue enclosure for the, the ventilation for the stacks. And this has been modeled on the uh, on the mock-up, so we could test the visibility from the street, the other facade. Some detail of the rear facade there. So the plan with on the bottom, you have the existing, on top you have the proposed plan. And this is the parlor floor. Second floor, so you see here, we do have a two-bedroom on the back, which evidently impacts the layout of the facade. Third floor and the roof. So on this rendering here, we can see how we try to treat the rear facade. We do have a succession of pattern, you know, we have the basement and the parlor floor, where we have some sliding door. Sliding glass windows, so we maintain the two feet requirement on each side. And in order to unify the reason, where you have like one big window and then two punch opening, and then the three existing. Opening right there, we try to create some sort of frame. And to treat everything inside this frame, to unify it with uh, the cladding here between the window. Which would be of the same color than the new window, which would be the, the kind of historic dark uh, dark color here. You have some other view here, you see the bulkhead. You see on the side here, this is the proposed new stack enclosure. All the railing would be painted black like the um, you know, like existing fire stair railing. Some view from the top. Uh, we, there is a location that you can see here on the Hoist Street, where you have a missing building. And you have an incidental view here when you are walking, especially in winter. So this is a computer rendering of where would be the bulkhead. So the bulkhead again is slightly visible, the uh, rear yard extension is not, it's just lower here than uh, you know, than the, the wall on the street. We did build the mock-up, everything is there with a bulkhead, stair enclosure and the stack extension here. This is the stack of the neighbor and the railing. At the front yard, the, the front rail, sorry, on the front facade. And uh, going in the streets, we see, we absolutely can't see uh, from any point on Carroll Street. Uh, any of the extension on the top, on the roof. Going back to this location here on the Hoist Street, we have this incidental view, it's actually right there. And if we zoom a little bit, we can see again right there, the bulkhead. Uh, we work as hard as we could to minimize as much as possible the size of the bulkhead. Uh, to, to treat, you know, to minimize the impact and the visibility from the street. So we had a lot of back and forth and discussion with the staff about uh, the remaining third floor. If it should be kept as existing or if it could be demolition rebuilt, maintaining all the detail of the existing. This is a project that crossed the street, it's a. maintaining all the detail of the existing. This is a project that crossed the street. It's a three-story extension, very similar. Uh and on this condition here, the top facade has been maintained here. So there is some uh steel structure on the inside, which is hanging the facade up in the air while you are demolishing and building the extension, demolishing the facade below and making the extension. We were initially a bit concerned about the match of the brick here. Because evidently, when you remove the stucco from the old wall, you do have some sort of stain on the brick, and it's difficult to match with um with a new brick. Uh so we have some back and forth, and now we are, so again, this is across the street, two-seventy. And this is some test here that we did on the building uh to check how the brick would look like after we remove the stucco. So we do think that it's possible, actually. We like to maintain the existing as much as possible. So we think that we we can work, uh repoint the brick, work on the surface of it, and more than that is to to try to find a new brick, which match as much as possible what will be the condition of the existing brick after the stucco removal. Um we also had our meeting at the community board, uh six. They had some concern about the color of the black of the 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 facade on the back. And we know how much it fit the historic context. We sort of agree that on the previous image, the black was a little harsh, a little too hard as color. So we are happy to work with you and with the staff to see if we can adjust slightly the the color to make it, you know, blend a little bit more with the brick. But at the same time, we do want to have some sort of contrast. And we want to limit the number of material on the back. So we 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 think it's better than if this infill material here sort of work with the frame of uh the windows and really sort of indicate, you know, the kind of more, at least slightly more modern facade, which would be distinguishable from the old building. Uh but again, so this is in reaction to the community board uh comment, and we are very happy to discuss with you and to hear all your comments.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Alright, let's see if we have public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through any testimony.
Thank you Chair Carroll. We had one sign up in advance, and that was from Lucy Levine from Historical Districts. And I will be promoting Lucy to panelists now. So if you could please just state your name for public record and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. Um thank you for letting me speak. HTC finds the three-story rear yard addition to be inappropriate and too bulky for this location. A more typical two-story rear yard addition would be more appropriately scaled and in keeping with this donut. We would note that there are currently no other significant additions in this donut, and that this project will set a precedent for inevitable future additions, which is why we believe a two-story addition would be a more appropriate solution. HTC would also note that given the scope and ambition of this renovation, the applicant should be required to restore the building's original wood cornice. Thank you.
Thank you very much Lucy. I believe that that is all we have for testimony. I would also like to note, as the applicant did, that Brooklyn Community Board Six did recommend conditional approval suggesting the following two changes. Revising the window design of the second floor to keep with the traditional design, and ensuring the material used in reconstruction of the top floor outside the wall matched the brick of the rest of the building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
About the committee board, uh six, in fact, we were presenting the project with either or demolishing or rebuilding the third floor. And now we're actually very, you know, happy to maintain the existing third floor. So, uh you know, it would be our best to preserve the building. Uh regarding the question of cornice, uh yes, we would agree and we will consider to restore the cornice on the front facade, back to the original condition. Uh regarding the height of the building, I would like to point that the extension is not visible from the street. Uh you know, that there are some extension on the surrounding, including, you know, those four-story on the left and on the right of the building. And that it's, you know, we know that it's not a precaution for for the landmark, but it's kind of a really a need from the client to be able to have enough extension to be able to fit the bedroom for all the children. So there is a programmatic reason why we went to the three-story extension. It would be probably difficult to fit it in a two-story extension. The 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 building is fairly shallow, it's like forty-two feet. It's not a very deep building.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Alright, I am sending you all requests unmute so that we can begin our discussion. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, I'm I'm closing the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So we are looking at the rooftop bulkhead as well as the construction of the three-story rear yard addition. Um the bulkhead would otherwise meet the rules for a staff level approval, except for the fact that you have, there is that incidental view through the backyards where one can see it. And um and the three-story rear yard addition, the applicant has shown a couple of taller additions, but I think the majority of additions in the block plan are um lower. So we, there does seem to be one directly across that's three-story and the the taller ones on either end. So we'll have a discussion about how the the scale of this addition fits within that context. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Well, I, for me, it's it's this one, this is not actually that difficult. Let's start with the with the with the uh the rooftop there. Uh it's a um the visibility is really minimal and it's on an, you know, an oblique angle. And so I'm not concerned about the uh the bulkhead and and the flue extension. Um in terms of whether there can be an extension or not here, I think obviously that that is acceptable. Um um material is generally fine. Um however, um this is a a great example of a donut that um is uh will be disrupted. Uh not just the row, but also the entire donut by um an extension of this um of this magnitude. Um so I would, um I think there was some testimony that suggested it should be a floor uh lower, and I and I agree with that. Um that those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yes, I I think it it is true that this, that there are not um a lot of incursions into this donut, but there are some, and that is the case. I I actually think that um that again, as Commissioner Gustafson has noted, the rooftop is is fine and not visible, but I actually think that I could approve and find appropriate the three-story um rear yard extension. I, what I don't, I'm not um all that excited about is the expression of its facade or um its window treatment. And I think that we've we've often wanted for there to be a bit more, let's say, a bit less glass here. It's, there's seems to be wood or something else. I mean, I think that it's, as per Commissioner Bland's points about um a previous project that we looked at, looking sort of commercial. This is, does not look commercial, but it does um i- is too much of a kind of a different kind of expression on this um this rear facade. So I would want for there to be work on it. But I can support the three-story addition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Um yes, thank you. Um I find that the rooftop stair bulkhead is is fine. Um minimally visible from an acute angle. Um but I agree with um Commissioner Gustafson that the three-story rear addition is one story too tall. And I think that, you know, if they bring it down one story, that might help alleviate some of Commissioner Shamir Baron's concerns about the design, although she supports the taller addition. I think two-story is more appropriate, given that fact that this donut is pretty devoid of rear additions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith and Commissioner Gustafson about uh the height of the addition. I think that uh, you know, you look at the entire uh, you know, you you just don't see full-width additions that are taller than two stories, and there aren't even that many uh two-story. But you know, that would be fine. Uh but I think three just isn't appropriate for this particular location. And I think that the uh rooftop accretions are are fine and minimal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
Um yeah, I agree with previous comments. Knock it down by a story, bulkhead's fine.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Devonshire.
I concur. Bulkhead is acceptable. Take a story off of the rear addition.
Commissioner Bland.
Think this image uh for me proves that it all, it's inappropriate at three, but if you knock that down, or it would be perfectly appropriate, even with the design as it's being shown. And certainly the rooftop um addition is fine.
Thank you. Commissioner uh Lutfi.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it should, we should take a story off the addition and make sure that the original windows stay uh are intact. Uh and um I'm fine with the bulkhead.
Okay, when you say original windows are intact, you mean?
Well, I mean the design.
The opening, okay.
The openings, yeah, the reopening. It's so consistent, donut is so consistent. Um I think it seems appro- more appropriate to me.
And the rules would allow the staff at a non-visible rear facade to modify window openings a little bit, but I think it'll still maintain a more residential character than what you're looking at right now. So, okay. Alright, so I think we have a consensus to approve with modifications, that it be lowered by a floor. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make that motion?
In the matter of uh LPC twenty-two, one-two-one-four-zero, two-eight-one Carroll Street in the Carroll Gardens Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and reconstruct the rear facade. I note that the building's scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Carroll Gardens Historic District. I recommend approval with a modification, finding that the sloped stair bulkhead and flue extension will only be seen from a significant distance from Hoy Street and are visually detached from the building's primary facade. That the materials and design of the bulkhead are in keeping with the with typical rooftop accretions found on row houses, that the presence of a rear yard addition will be consistent with historic development of this building and other buildings of this type over time. That the simple massing and materials of the addition consisting of brick cladding and metal and wood window assemblies will be typical of secondary facades of buildings in this historic district, and in keeping with the residential character of the building in row. That the addition will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby preserving a sense of the building's original form and fenestration as part of a row. And the modest depth of the addition will not diminish the presence of the rear yard uh or the block's central green space. However, I find that the block contains few additions, with the majority being one to two-story in height. Therefore, the proposed three-story addition will diminish and overwhelm significant un- unifying characteristics of this largely intact row. Therefore, I recommend that the addition be lowered by one floor to relate better to the context of the block.
Thank you. And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
I second it.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Not here.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Alright, that's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next hearing item.
The next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-two dash one-zero-eight-one-two. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block twelve fifty-five, lot thirty-four, nine-ten St. John's Place in the Crown Heights North Historic District. This is an altered Renaissance Revival style row house designed by Frederick L. Heine and built circa eighteen ninety-nine. The application is to legalize the installation of a bicycle storage bin at the areaway without LPC permits.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing and the staff will be taking you through the presentation.
Uh good morning again Commissioners, Michelle Creran Preservation Staff. As Corey said, this application is to legalize the installation of a bike shed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits at the area of nine-ten St. John's Place. The subject property is located on the south side of St. John's Place between Nostrand and New York Avenue, shown here. On the left side is the areaway before, and on the right is after the installation of the bike shed. On the left, I'm sorry, um and here are some close-ups, including showing the dimensions. And some context images showing um the areaway from both the east and the west. On the left is an image showing the nineteen forties tax photo, and on the right is the designation photo. The owner has also included images of other areaway accretions within the historic district, and here you can see a key to where those are within the district. Here are those images showing um those accretions, which include awnings, garbage enclosures and parking areas. Which predate the designation of the historic district. The owner is here and can answer your questions.
Great, thank you very much. Oh Commissioners, do we have any questions? Alright, I don't see any questions at this time. So why don't we take public testimony and then we'll turn to the owner and ask him to respond and address anything he'd like to address at that time. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Thank you Chair Carroll. Uh we received one sign up in advance, and that was from Christina Conroy from Victorian Society. So Christina, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for public record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon Commissioners. Uh it's good afternoon almost. Um I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York City in nineteen sixty-six, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our nineteenth and early twentieth century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual landmarks, interiors and civic art. Now, it's difficult to find these kinds of sheds in front yards of row houses to be architecturally appropriate. By providing some benefit to the district, however, such as hiding trash containers, their presence can perhaps be accommodated when they are reasonably scaled and decent design and materials are used. We're trying to think of a storage of bicycles in this light, wondering whether the benefit of encouraging their use in historic districts would outweigh the intrusiveness of the shed. But it appears the shed proposed for legalization is actually a motorcycle garage, not a bicycle storage bin, despite the description on the calendar. Now that explains its large size. The before picture on slide three shows two motorcycles in the yard prior to construction of the shed. Now, we do not think it appropriate to provide enclosed parking for motor vehicles in the front yards of row houses, and the large size of this shed makes it especially inappropriate. We urge denial of this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much Christina. And I believe that is all we have for hands raised. I would also like to note that Community Board Eight voted to withhold support for this application uh while encouraging and supporting the applicant in applying directly to LPC. It also noted that while no permanent changes were made to the building, it has no his, the board has no history of approving applications for forgiveness or legalizations after the fact. I would also note that the applicant submitted a petition to us containing thirty-two signatures from neighbors around the Crown Heights Historic District that support the bike shed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to turn back to the applicant now. Mr. Oster, would you like to respond to the comments and add anything else that you'd like the Commissioners to hear?
Yes, um thank you Chair Carroll. Um I I appreciate Ms. Conroy's um testimony. And I I do want to confirm that it is a bicycle shed. Um the motorcycles shown are um from the previous owner. The motorcycles shown are from the previous owners who don't live there. We don't own motorcycles. There are currently bicycles for ourselves and our two children, plus for use of the tenant downstairs. So the shed houses, is able to house five bicycles. And it is really the minimum size possible to house bicycles. As far as the size, if you go to Slide 9, if you would, Michelle. This is a garbage enclosure with the same, it's actually the same manufacturer. And it's, and it's the same height. So as far as the height goes, this really is, it's not much higher. It does jut out further from the building because we didn't want it to intrude on the, on the light for the apartment. It's also not attached to the building in any way, which is why we onerously, or erroneously, excuse me, assumed that it would not fall under landmarks because it would be considered furniture. As, you know, obviously, we made a mistake as new homeowners and new to the historic district and we thoroughly apologize for that mistake. But I think in our, in defense of the shed, we have, we did consult with our neighbors before erecting it. And we have gotten signatures from every one of our immediately media adjacent neighbors as well as, or as 31 other neighbors on the block within the historic district that supported and, and find that it is an elegant solution. We are open to, you know, to modifying. In working with the staff, we had found that the color was already in an appropriate muted tone to match the historic nature. But that being said, we are open to further suggestions to modify the aesthetics of the bicycle shed.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I don't see any final questions, so I'm going to send you all the requests to unmute so that we can move to our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this is for this shed structure in the front areaway. And I will note that the staff is authorized to issue staff-level permits for some enclosures in front areaways, most notably for garbage enclosures that are a bit smaller than this and often tucked back more. So this is a structure that is not that different from a type of structure that can be approved at staff level, but it is before us today, I think really mainly because of its size and placement right at the fence. So I think those are things that we'll talk about as we have our discussion. We've had, we've heard the applicant explain the size and the number of bicycles it stores. So we can think about that as well. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Yeah. I'm, I have to say, just, this is an eyesore and it, it isn't, it really is, it's too big and it is too far forward. I would love to be able to put this in a situation where it could have a staff approval, which would mean making it smaller and setting it back. I would hate to set a pres, I would hate to set a precedent. Unfortunately, if we do that, it would mean you probably couldn't store as many bikes, which I'm sorry about, but I, I think it has to, I think you have to work with staff to make it smaller and move it back. So it's less visible.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I would just further to what Commissioner Lutfi said. It's, it's not just an eyesore, it's an unnecessary eyesore. Bikes are not garbage. One does not store garbage in one's house. And, and having grown up in this city, in a one-bedroom apartment, we had our bikes in our apartment. And that has been the great New York City tradition since the dawn of time. It does not discourage people from having bikes, that they keep them in their, in their unit. So, you know, I, I can't see my way to approving this. It is, it is truly an eyesore.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think if it's a bit smaller, I, I think it would be all right, but I think it is bigger than, than you can sort of see past. I think, I think it does need to be smaller. And so I think I have to agree with the previous Commissioners that this is not appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I agree. It's too big and it's much too close to the, to the street. So, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I think it's because it's these electric bikes. It looks, it looks like it, because obviously, regular, non-electric bikes don't need such a big enclosure. But the position of it is definitely a problem. I mean, there are some, as there was pointed out, some garbage things that are in these entryways. I prefer not to have it there at all, but I certainly could approve some kind of enclosure. But the, its position is really a problem in terms of its, you know, blocking your view of the house and, and just looking kind of unsightly. So at a minimum, it needs to be moved. And if you could manage to store them in something smaller, that would be desirable. I thought even of something transparent, but that's perhaps not practical. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. Not acceptable as is. Move it back, make it smaller. And put planting in the front, very similar to the image shown as one of their supporting images where there was some landscaping to screen it.
Okay. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I, I think it, it needs to be smaller. I think you have to be careful about how close to the house you move it because then you block the visual to the house. I think it also could be a different color. It, it just seems massive because of that, the present color.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Yes, inappropriate as is, again, too far forward and too large. But this, this is a conundrum. And I was trying to figure out, I have the same problem myself in my own house in Brooklyn Heights. And I added, thank goodness, I thought at the last minute to get approval from the Landmarks Commission. I almost went ahead and did it without approval. That would have been terrible. Anyway, the, the situation there worked very nicely for custom-built enclosure for garbage, for two garbage cans. You know, historically, I think these sorts of accoutrements that were needed by house owners when there were single-family houses could all be handled pretty much under the stoop. That was the, that was where you put these things. But as we have subdivided houses that has been overtaxed, maybe even under different ownerships, et cetera, et cetera. So it has created a difficulty here, which I recognize. And I recognize the difficulty in, in creating an appropriate bike storage in this particular place. But I guess that's not our, our, our problem right this minute. Our problem is to say, is this appropriate? And I have to say it's not.
Okay, all right. So I think that everybody agrees that this particular shed enclosure is too big and too far forward. But I think we can probably vote it out with the modification that they work closely with the staff to reduce the size of it and set it back and explore a different finish that would be more neutral and blend with the facade and the adjacent stoop. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you be comfortable doing that motion and just adding those to the recommendation? Yeah, great.
Yeah. In the matter of DACA 22-10812, 910 St. John's Place, Crown Heights North Historic District, an altered Renaissance Revival-style row house designed by Frederick L. Heine and built circa 1899. The application is to legalize the installation of a bicycle storage bin at the areaway without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Crown Heights North Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the existing areaway paving consists of modern concrete. Therefore, the installation of a storage bin does not damage, eliminate, or conceal any significant features of the building or site. That the storage bin is typical of modern enclosures commonly found at areaways in terms of materials, details, and finish, and does not call undue attention to itself. That areaways of this block feature a variety of altered conditions, including planting beds, garbage bins, and parking pads. Therefore, the installation of an enclosure does not disrupt a unified condition in the row. And that the size of the bin does not overwhelm.
Well, don't read that one. Yeah.
I'm not reading that. However, I find that the, that the size and proximity of the bin and the proximity of the bin to the area, areaway fence in front of the neighborhood still calls undue attention to its presence in the landscape. I, therefore, I recommend that the applicant work very closely with staff to, um, to reduce the size of the bin and to set it back from the areaway fence. And also on a planting bed with evergreen plantings to be installed in front. And the applicant should also work up with staff on the color of the bin.
Okay, all right. And I think we'll explore the planting bed and then work with the staff on the finish to help it blend with the facade. Okay. Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Uh, nope.
No, okay. Sorry about that. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion? All right. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
I, I, I guess.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With eight in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so please work with the staff on a solution that is smaller and set back and with a different finish that will help it to blend away better in the streetscape. And you can also explore some planting, if that is something that you think, you think would also be, be open to. And hopefully, they'll, will come up with a solution that meets, if not all of your needs, some of your needs and respects the building. Okay, we'll move to the next item.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 23-00428. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Lock 1209, Lot 36, 1450 Pacific Street in the Crown Heights North Historic District. This is an Italianate neo-grec-style freestanding house designed by G. Damon, built circa 1882. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and a roof deck at the garage, modify a masonry opening, and install a fence.
Okay Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Richard, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen.
Thank you.
Richard, I do need you to click on your screen.
Okay.
Great. And you can, please state your name for the record and you may be.
My name's Richard Gutstein, from NC2 Architecture. So first slide shows the existing conditions on the left and the original building in 1940s. What you can notice is that the existing building, as mentioned, was, is freestanding. There is a non-original garage that was added, we believe, in the 1920s or so. In addition to that, there is a concrete retaining wall that was added at some later date as well. The building is in, it's an anomaly in a district that has primarily attached buildings. So this sort of points out the hearing items. The items, as mentioned, are roof, top roof and enlargement that you'll see in a minute. The roof deck on top of the, the roof deck on top of the garage and extension of a fence and gate in front of the garage. The other thing to keep in mind is that we are doing a full gut renovation of the house. These are the items that are not hearing items. And a full restoration of the facade. We're also lowering the non-original or removing the non-original retaining wall at the front down to what we believe is the original curb. So the gate that we're proposing in front of the garage will work in, in sync with, with the changes to the front yard. For a little context, as I mentioned, it's primarily attached buildings. We are freestanding building here, almost at the corner of Pacific Street and Kingston Avenue. Some context photos, various views of the front facade. Just for information, you see the wraparound porch, views of the rear facade and the alley side of the building. Our visibility diagram shows the visibility of our, of our alterations from directly across the street. There's the roof deck and railing over here. One thing we are doing up on the roof is is changing the angle of the existing pyramidal roof to allow an eight-foot ceiling height up in the attic area that allows occupancy up, up in the attic. The enlargement is, is not visible from the front. We are proposing a roof deck on top of that. And there is some visibility to the railing on top of the roof deck. This is front elevation showing demo on the left, proposed on the right. We are, this is the raised roof as compared to the one that is being removed. And you do see, and it looks terrible in the elevation, you do see an enlargement that's set back at the rear of the building. And you also see the railing to the roof deck. Obviously, when you see it orthogonally like this, it looks worse than it looks when you see it in perspective. What you also see here is the proposed change to, to the, to the front yard and how we're carrying across the fence to the front of the, of the existing garage. We are restoring the original, what we believe to be the original garage doors. And we're also indicating the railing for the roof deck up on top of the garage. The other thing that we are proposing is to restore the existing height of the garage parapet. And we're going to carry that height all around. The other thing to keep in mind is that in order to have a roof deck here, we are removing the sill. This, this alteration will not be visible. And we are trying to simulate the appearance of a window with, with the new door. So this is our demo elevation from the side. So this is our, um, demo elevation from the side. Um, what I'd like to point out is that the roof itself has, um, no significant features. And then this is the side view with the wraparound porch. Um, this is what you see, um, of our enlargement. And remember again, um, in perspective, it looks much different from the street. Um, roof deck and enlargement of the, um, of the rear of the attic. Rear view, um, showing pretty much, um, the same. And then demo and proposed of the attic side, um, of the alley side. Um, what you also see here is a restoration of all of the original masonry openings. So, um, I would like to talk about, um, the visibility of our alterations. So one thing that I cannot stress enough is that there is a very small window of visibility, um, to the enlargement of the roof. Um, it's basically, um, back about a hundred and seventy-five feet. There's a bus stop over here where you, you, you have a very long view um, toward the enlargement. And if you zoom into that, what you're seeing here is a little bit of the roof and you're seeing the railing for the roof deck. Um, but I can't stress enough that that's really only from this point. Um, the minute that you're at the center of the street, um, the cornice will, will block the view. Um, and obviously, moving side to side, um, you can see here between these buildings, there is only a very narrow, um, window of visibility. When you get across the street, um, to the, um, to the left side of the building, there is a little bit of visibility um, to the, um, to the side of our enlargement. Um, you don't see the railing, um, from this, from this viewpoint. Um, and again, this is a very, very narrow window of visibility. As you move down the street, um, that, that visibility goes away. And from directly in front, as you saw in the visibility diagram, you do see a little bit of the handrail. Um, the other thing I would like to point out is we had an earlier proposal, um, for this project that incorporated a bulkhead up to the roof deck, and we met with the community board to present that, and it wasn't received very well. So, um, we did make some pretty dramatic changes and we moved the stair access to the roof deck, to the rear of the house, to, uh, limit the amount, um, of visibility and, and the amount of alteration of the building. And, um, met with them again, um, last week and the week before, and, um, they were much more satisfied with it. Um, the other thing that you see in this view is the mock-up of the garage. You can see restoring the original parapet height, carrying that parapet height across to the side um, for full disclosure. Um, this is actually a mock-up. And this side was, um, is, is a photo montage, um, which shows how the, uh, sill of this window that's going to be removed is blocked by the parapet. Um, you also see the mock-up of, um, of the railing for the roof deck. Um, here's a photo montage, um, showing that worst-case, um, view from the side of the building up to the enlargement. So as you can see here, um, the, we're proposing to, um, to paint what is now white on the cornice um, in this sort of multicolored green, um, and restore what we believe are the original colors of the building, and we've, um, we've uncovered some of the old paint. Um, and we believe that this is very close or, um, pretty exact to, um, what the original color scheme of the building was. When we were deciding, um, what this side of the enlargement, um, should look like, we, we thought about, um, an appropriate comparison, um, for this would, would be a dormer. Um, obviously, it's not a dormer. It's, it's larger than that. But in terms of choosing a material, um, we're proposing, um, flabbards here that would be painted to match the proposed color of the cornice and, um, sort of, um, not seem as much of a, um, of, of an addition. Um, you also see from this view the changes to the, um, front of the garage. Um, and we have one more, um, view showing the addition of the railing for the roof deck above the non-original garage. Um, and here is a window detail that shows the existing window out to the deck and its modification to a door. Um, we have some, uh, um, some examples of brownstone Brooklyn districts where, um, roof decks on garages were approved. And, um, a previous project of ours where we did a, um, similar, um, uh, change of a window. This is thirteen seventy-five Dean Street, which is around the block from, uh, fourteen fifty Pacific, where we changed these front windows to, um, doors and did that, um, pretty successfully, and that was approved by the Landmarks Commission. And that's, um, that's my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance and then move to others, and I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Uh, we received a couple of signups beforehand, so I'm going to move those through those first. The first is, uh, Lucy Levine from HTC. So Lucy, I'm going to promote you to panelists now. And if you could just unmute your line and state your name for public record, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. While HTC believes that a for this building, we find that the current solution could use a bit more.
We, we, you, you actually broke up there, so if you maybe just start again, just so we could make sure we hear everything.
Sure, thank you, Chair Carroll. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
While HTC believes that a rooftop addition may be appropriate for this building, we find that the current solution could use a bit more finesse. To be more specific, we believe that the rooftop addition should be more dormer-like in its detailing so that it appears to have been an older, more traditional accretion. HTC is comfortable with the proposed ironwork in the front of the house, but finds the ironwork in front of the garage to be an unnecessary element. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Lucy. Uh, next up will be Christina Conroy from VSNY. Christina, I'm promoting you to panelists now, so if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon again, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society opposes most components of this proposal as we find them inappropriate to this important and uncommon freestanding Italianate house. The rooftop additions, even were they not visible from the street, would be inappropriate to a house whose formal symmetry and hipped roof are typical and significant features of this style. Their visibility makes them especially problematic. We take special note of the proposed deck atop the new roof. Now, this house already has a generous amount of outdoor space, both covered and uncovered. Although the garage is an unfortunate addition to the front yard, we don't object to raising its front parapet to replicate the original height and shape. However, the side parapets should not be raised as this will cause them to awkwardly intercept and obscure portions of the historic porch railing. Replacement of the modern garage door with a set of doors that resemble the historic ones will be an improvement, but there is no information in the presentation about materials and details. We would rather see that information than photos of garage doors at other buildings, which seem to have no relevance, and we have the historic documentation for this house and the apparent intent to replicate the historic doors. These boards of examples and precedent seem to be a mandated part of every presentation, yet often, as here, they just take up space and confuse the issues at hand. So finally, the reconstruction of the front retaining wall is described in two very different ways. Slide seven shows a picket fence on top of the original low stone curb. The renderings, on the other hand, show a new brick wall with a fence on top of it. We think the former approach is better as the existing brick wall isn't historic, and we're not sure that the masonry wall shown in the nineteen thirty-nine tax photo is either. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christina. Uh, so it looks as though those are all of the speakers we have for this issue. I would also note that Brooklyn Community Board Eight recommended approval of the rooftop extension and denial of the deck over the garage, citing Crown Heights North Association's opposition. And Crown Heights North Association recommended denial, stating that the roof extension would be visible, the garage roof deck is problematic, and the examples provided are misrepresented of the area with almost all of them being from Fort Greene.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Um, sure. Um, first of all, the comment about the, um, the proposed work at the, um, at the front wall. Um, I think this elevation represents what the design intent is. Um, and yes, I understand that our, um, renderings, um, don't show that, but our, our renderings don't show the, um, the existing condition being changed. Just because that's not what we were trying to illustrate in, in those renderings, but the elevations, um, are true to, um, what we are proposing. Um, and just, just a side comment, um, about the examples that we were showing were, um, they're not to, um, show the garage doors, um, but rather examples of brownstone Brooklyn, um, roof decks on top of garages in historic districts.
Okay, all right. So, but what material are the garage doors?
They'll be wood.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mazor, would you like to add something?
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Commissioners for letting me speak and also considering the, this project. My, my passion is historic houses. Um, I live in, I live in the block, uh, next block. Uh, we did, um, Elkins House Restoration Project, and we, I like to take big challenges, uh, to restore and preserve and get beautiful results. This is where the starting point of why even do this project. I would like to know that we made a big, big effort um, to do many upgrades to the, to the current facade of the building, uh, mainly on the, uh, wraparound porch, which is a, a significant feature. We're stripping the whole wood, and this, we did a lot of work with the, with the staff of Landmark to, 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 to reach the original colors and the scheme and, and make sure the porch is going to be, uh, dominant. We're going to strip the porch, we're going to lower the yard, uh, for, right now, it's kind of way too high. This masonry wall is, is, is totally not appropriate. We, we, we would like to do what we think would be much more historically correct, lower it and invest the money and the, and the effort to do historic ironwork. Um, and then, of course, to work on, on the garage, which is, right now, is really an eyesore, and spend the money and spend the effort, restore original doors, which is a big, uh, ticket item, not necessary, but from, from the visual look and historic look of it, it would be exactly as, 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 as close as we can to the tax photo. Um, and, uh, the side, the sidewall that we are raising to, to restore, to, to match this, that it really looks like one, one, it would be original. Um, and the overall, the, the, the visibility here is, it is visible, but it's ve- very minimal, and it, and it's very, it's very difficult to convey this. Uh, when you're in front of the building on Pacific Street, you see basically nothing uh, from the, uh, from the rooftop. You mean, you see maybe a little bit of the, the top of the railing, which we will paint in a color that will disappear, uh, in like gray or so. It's like really, you, basically, really, it's negligible. Um, only when you walk to the side of the, of the building, you really see that little thing sticking out. And we would like to, to, if you tell us how to make it even, even more appropriate, uh, than this, please let us know. If you want us to be more dormer-like, it would be great. We, we wanted to look historic. We wanted to be like a gem. Um, but right now, it's really blending into the, into the corners. We're going to do, restore the whole cornice back to the way it was. And we're going to replace all the windows in the, in the, in, in, in the building and do all this, uh, big effort, so it will overall would look something that is very appeasing to the person who look at it from the street. Um, and we would like to, I personally ask, uh, us Landmark to, to think about it in favor, uh, favorably when, when you look at the, at the whole investment and the effort to, to make this historic. Last thing I want to say is that the visibility from Kingston, from the bus station is like very, very far away, and you would not see it with your own eyes. You have to zoom it on, you have to really try to look between the building, zoom it on your phone, and then you will see it. But once you walk to the middle of the street on Kingston, hopefully not get hit by a bus, it disappears. That's it. So, in trying to make it appropriate, I think we did a lot, a lot of work with the staff, with the community board, and I really hope you will, you will, you will approve this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any final questions? All right, so I don't see any final questions. We'll start to unmute and move to our discussion. Right, Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Um, and so Commissioners, there is a lot of restoration work that is happening here that is not for us today at the facades as well as in front areaway. But what we are looking at, we should focus our comments on, are the gate in front of the garage, um, the raising of the parapet, um, the restore, the front is a restoration to its original height, but raising it on the sides and the railing to allow for a deck on top of the garage. The dropping of the sill, which will be obscured by the sill of the window to create a door leading onto that deck, which would be obscured by the raising of the side parapet of that garage. And then at the roof, modifying the shallow-sloped hipped roof to create an addition, um, that I think the applicant explained they're trying to have read as a dormer uh, from the point where it is visible. And I, I gather from the presentation that this is the point where you see the most of it. Um, but there is a very long view where you will see, um, some of it from a, a distance, but, and, and a zoom photograph has been provided to show what that would be, if you could discern that from that distance. So it's the, sort of, the changes around the garage, the gate, the parapet, the railing and the window, and then the rooftop addition. So, um, let's begin our discussion. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Um, sure. I mean, I have to say that the that none of the additions, I, I'm, I'm very supportive, obviously, of the restorative work that they're doing and the enthusiasm and general, sort of, general energy that seems to, to be part of the project and interested in bringing the building back and taking care of it. That's a wonderful thing. Um, in a strange way, I mean, I, I feel that there is a kind of a loss at adding, um, additional form and profile to this particular kind of roof. I think it's unfortunate, and I also think it's sort of a, a bit unfortunate to even add, um, an, an additional space to above the garage, even though the garage is not a particularly special or, or beautiful thing. Um, and yet, and so I, I find that And yet, and so I find that both things are sort of seemingly, they seem to me to be not necessary. But I'm and I'm not I'm not saying that in terms of a program. I just feel as though both of those things slightly detract from the kind of the cohesion, the sort of the history of the building. However, I think that they've made a case for the fact that there's very minimal visibility, and so I would request that that visibility is minimized even further. So where we do see the rail on the roof, we find they find a way to push it back or down so that we do not that the proposals around a more dormer-like accretion in the roof that that we think ask them to think about that perhaps with staff. I think that the it that the parapet extension is is okay, even though I think, again, it's it's not the right move for this building, but I don't think that it's a problem, and I could find it appropriate. So to the door replacement and the extension of the window to make it into a door onto that roof element, I think all of them are okay. Again, I don't think that they're great, and but I think that they're appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh, yes. Um, I agree with a lot of comments Commissioner Shamir Baron just made. I think as this type of building is such an anomaly, and it really reads as a just a freestanding house with its sort of perfect geometry, the rooftop addition really doesn't work the way they've got it drawn and indicated here. I think there should be zero visibility of a roof railing from any vantage point. And I think any rooftop addition should be much more minimal and look much more like a dormer. This is, you know, looks like something just got landed on top of the roof of this building. As for the garage, I think raising the front parapet is appropriate to the original configuration of the front facade, but I think that the side elevations, side parapet walls should remain low. If you look in the historic photo, they were never the same height. And you can, you know, have the railing go around to provide the correct height that you need for a railing and an occupied terrace. I think dropping the window to a to a door to allow access to that is fine. I think dropping the or removing the retaining wall at the front yard is a good move with a lower fence. I don't know that the fence in front of the garages, garage doors are necessary, but I don't think it's objectionable. But what I find the most troublesome is the rooftop addition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I, yeah, I agree with a lot of the comments of both my fellow colleagues who just spoke. I am concerned about the sense that the roof line of this very nice building, which is, as they said, being gutted inside, is being lost with the addition. And I agree that it should should look more like a dormer and and hopefully, in some way, the sense of that original roof line could be at least indicated. And I think that the railing is should not be visible. I think that most of the other changes that are proposed are are fine, you know, and appropriate. I don't have any problem with them.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. The green box should be a dormer. I think in general, Adi's and Anne's comments about the design of the addition kind of tells a different story than what the applicant told of wanting to do something that really matches the house and extends the house. There is a long history, both of of modifications to this style house in Brooklyn. We I remember seeing projects, I think, in Brooklyn Heights or I don't remember exactly where, but similar buildings where sympathetic extensions in the style of the original house were done much more successfully than this, from windows to cornices to materials. I think that's a very good approach that the applicant offered to us of the dormer, but I think you got to really take it further. And as Anne was saying, you really got to look at this addition, whether it's visible or not, as something that is an accretion to the building. And as such, the proportion of the windows, the location, configuration of the stairs, the top of the parapet, et cetera, all are things that should be looked at further. You've got two roof decks on this house, one on the top and one on the garage. Sure you need both? Maybe, you know, it seems like the the flat roof on the on the on the rooftop addition is driving a lot of the design decisions, stair access, the flat roof, et cetera, the height, which could be reexamined. I I don't believe that a roof terrace is required item these days for 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 this kind of house building. So perhaps if the building were to eliminate its rooftop addition, or not a rooftop, it's 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 roof rooftop terrace, you would get rid of the railing. You could slope it. It would look more like a dormer because it would be more like a dormer. And I I think a lot of things would fall into place that would be more. And right now, the addition looks kind of like a a bulkhead that you don't want us to see, except for the fact that it's painted green, as opposed to a natural dormer of a Italianate house that is intended to be seen. So I think that that that's a better direction to go. In terms of the front yard garage, I think the fence is acceptable. I think the raising of the, I I'm really actually I think that anything that can be done to reduce the height of the parapet and and to increase the visibility to the existing house will restore the quality of that house as such a kind of urban anomaly in its neighborhood, which I think is its charm. Garage, you know, added later, obviously, takes away from the sense of this house sitting on a hill that used to be here before this other stuff was here, and I think that that's something to cherish and enhance. So if visibility of the main house can be enhanced in any way by the reduction of the height of the parapets, even if if you're seeing the house through the railings of the roof terrace, I think that's a much better way to go than to worry about the historical accuracy or style of the garage per se.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I pretty much agree with everything that Commissioner Goldblum has said. I I do find that the garage does represent a historical accretion. And in as much as that is true, I think that the the gate, the fence and gate in front of it needs to be eliminated from the application.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
I have to say, I find these kinds of anomalies, the word has been used many times by the Commissioners, to be absolutely charming. I know others probably look at these conditions and see the neighbors, the big bulky apartments and say, oh, so sad. Maybe it's the Pollyanna in me that looks at, well, we at least have this. And it's just such a wonderful anomaly in the streetscape of of our city today that we still do have these. So it places an undue burden, maybe, on this little house to really get it right. And I don't think it's right now. I also wanted to compliment both the Victorian Society and HTC on really, really helpful testimonies. Helped me see things, too. I think the big problem, the biggest problem and the unpardonable problem is the rooftop addition, and that just has to change. It's all wrong. I think those who before me have suggested that trying to make a habitable rooftop, flat roof up there, that's probably the font of the problem. And the applicant himself used the word dormer. Well, he didn't create a dormer, so let's go back and look at dormers, because a dormer might well be the the right solution to the problem, but a dormer probably doesn't have a flat roof above it either. I think it's been said around the garage that the railings in front of the garage maybe should be eliminated. But I think what else is being suggested, if I understand it all properly, is reasonably and okay. It's 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 the rooftop that I'm particularly a problem with, and you know, and even when it's not seen, you know, because of it doesn't mean that you can just do anything up there, you know, it should it and and many of the windows that are being shown up there are like sixty slot windows and so forth, really inappropriate. And just because it's not seen from the public way doesn't mean it's appropriate. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Okay, I'm I'm just, I'm going to, I'm in agreement with all the comments that my fellow Commissioners have made relative to the rooftop addition. And I I think it needs to be looked at again. I I it's wonderful that the applicant is doing all this restorative work. And we greatly, I greatly appreciate it, as does everyone else. This is, in many ways, a very special house because it is a little different from what's around it. I I think one of the things that's happening here is the applicant is making these changes to enhance the building's marketability for whatever he's trying to create, multi-unit with multi outside access points, and it's it's ending up taking away from the homes, because it hasn't been conceived properly, from taking away from the home's integrity. One thing that I think I'm going to go a step further on in terms is relates to the garage. I think a railing on the top of the garage is completely inappropriate. This garage is juts out in front of the house. It's very much on the street. And I don't think that it makes sense to have this very much in this neighborhood, this very much on the street rooftop addition, just, you know, not very, not high above street level. And there's already a porch here. You know, that it's the owner is, the applicant's fortunate to have a garage, and there aren't many in these kinds of neighborhoods, and I think that's what the use of this building should continue to be. So I'm not in favor of this having a fence, this garage, or being a rooftop addition. We're having
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I think you probably, the applicant's probably heard enough comments about this that that will probably not be taking any action. I have nothing to add to the variety of comments that we've heard.
Okay. All right, so we, as as you said, we will be taking no action on this item. We have heard really a sort of a consensus about the rooftop addition needing to better be better integrated into the design of the roof and the design of the building as a whole, and that would may mean also rethinking the whole roof deck at that level as you re-study the forms and the shape and the right approach and details for your addition. And and then we've heard many Commissioners supported the some of the work at the garage, but we've heard some thoughts there as well about which parapets should be raised and the gate and the railing. So we'll ask you to think about all of the comments, and you can work with the staff to sort of show your revised proposal to them and develop a response to the comments, and we'll have you back as soon as you're ready. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we, it's just about one o'clock, so which is the time we were going to break. So let's break now for lunch and resume after lunch with item number six, I think is the next item.
Item five.
Item five, thank you. So that, you know, it's another long item, and I think it'll take a longer item, so it might take us further away from the break time. So we'll break now, and we'll come back with item number five and move through the afternoon session. So thank you all, and we're coming back at one thirty. And we'll ask all members of the public to exit the meeting voluntarily, so that you don't have technical difficulties when you try to rejoin at one thirty, if you are planning to rejoin this afternoon. So we're going to lock the meeting now, and we'll see everybody at one thirty. Thank you.